Good evening, everyone. If you would join us and get settled, I want to call the Council, Charlotte City Council's straw votes meeting to order. And we will start with our call to order, and it will be with, we'll start with our city clerk.
Ariel Smith, Lead City Clerk.
Anthony Fox, Interim City Attorney.
Good evening, Renee Johnson, and I'm honored to represent District 4.
Yes, Ma'am. Good evening, everyone. James Mitchell, City Council at Large.
Good evening, Dimples Ashmira, at Large.
Dante Anderson, Mayor Pro Tem, District 1.
Vi Lyles, Mayor.
Marcus Jones, City Manager.
Malcolm Graham, District 2.
Good evening, Victoria Watlington, at Large.
Good evening, Tia Wanda Brown, representing Charlotte City Council District 3, elected for the people by the people.
So I just want to start this meeting is that it's the meeting for the council today, and its purpose and intent is to have voting on amendments or adjustments to the city manager's recommended FY 2026 budget that was proposed at the May 19 budget adjustments meeting by council. So this is the opportunity that we have. Today, we will review and vote on any proposed adjustments to the proposed FY 2026 budget. Council will then vote to direct the city manager to prepare the necessary documents and resolution for the FY 26 budget ordinance. As a reminder, the adjustments from the May 19 meeting, I believe that they were all provided to the council members on Thursday of last week, and so we are going to work from that list and as we continue to begin to develop the project, the budget that we want to have going into the new year. So today, based on the information we received, we'll further discuss any proposed adjustment and vote to determine if any will be included as an actual adjustment to update the proposed FY 26 budget that we vote on on June 9th at the June 9 business meeting. For the process, I propose that we hear from the Budget Governance and Intergovernmental Council Committee on any recommendations that the committee has based on their review of potential adjustments for the financial partners for funding. Then we can go ahead and discuss and vote on other changes as seen by the council. So with that, I'm going to turn that over to our Chair and our Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So all of you should have fiscal year 2026 proposed financial partners presentation in front of you. If you could look at Slide number eight, this is what was discussed at our May 19 budget meeting. It includes everything that our colleagues had brought up on May 19. And we approved this list at our meeting earlier today. This is a comprehensive list of all the partners that were raised on May 19. The only partners we did not approve are on Slide number nine, because some of those partners did not apply for the financial partner program. And I know that we had made a commitment to each other that we will be fair in our financial partner process to those who have gone through this application, have attended the orientation, and have followed all the rules of our process. So with that, our committee approved all the financial partners on Slide number eight, which will require $1.2 million in one-time funding that will come from ARPA bucket. So I hope my colleagues would support that, but it was unanimously, well, it was three to one, it was approved three to one at the committee level. And so I'm here to answer any questions that you have about this specific slide.
All right. So I see Mayor Pro Tem has, Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to enter in a motion to accept the BGIR committee recommendation on our financial partners for this fiscal year.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Now we'll have a discussion, and I'm going to recognize the Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a point of clarification, that motion is just for this particular slide?
That's correct.
Or is it for?
Specifically for Slide number eight.
Okay, so we have not gotten to Slide number nine yet?
So Slide number nine is not something approved by our committee, because Slide number nine includes partners that did not apply to the program. So we only included the ones that went through the process, and that's on Slide number eight. And you would see Roof Above, To Save Our Children, Those Hearts For The Invisible, those participants that have applied on this slide are included on Slide eight because they went through the formal process.
Okay, thank you. That was my question, because I wanted to make sure that we were addressing this specifically. And on Slide nine, there are, I had some specific questions if that was a part of the motion. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Mr. Manager, what do you want to?
I want to make sure that I'm tracking also. So Slide eight is additive to Slide six?
So, Slide eight, I'm sorry.
No, you can go ahead. So I was just going to, I did want to clarify a point to the manager's recommended budget, which is now your budget to adjust and review. The partners that were on that page, I believe it's Page 16, plus these were additive to So just Slide eight, plus what was already proposed.
Okay. So the manager, Mr. Graham?
I'm a little slow today, I'm sorry. So we're approving everything that I see in front of me, right? I just?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, and so that's Hearts For The Invisible, the History Museum, For The Struggle. And because it's not on Slide nine, so we're not approving Block Love Charlotte and/or Hearts For The Invisible. Is that what I'm saying?
Stars For The Invisible is on Slide number eight.
Did I miss it?
They are approved for 100K.
Okay, I can't, I'm slow, I'm slow today, I'm sorry.
And Block Love did not apply to this program.
So that's why they are not recommended. So I think if you look at Slide number eight, it includes everyone that were, that formally applied and recommended by council on May 19.
Okay. So we can, we can vote for this as a package, and if I want to make another recommendation, we can vote that up or down?
Yes, we'll have adjustments after we wanted to complete this one, and then we will go into what you would have, any other council?
I'm going to support all of this, for sure.
Okay.
And I might make another amendment to the budget for another organization, then the council can vote that up or down. But I'm certainly 100% for all those organizations, and we'll debate maybe one or two others.
Okay. Mr. Driggs?
So this would leave unused capacity for future use from ARPA of 4 million or so? Is that right?
1.2.
Marie, can you tell us the total sum, as the motion includes the total sum of money from ARPA? Can you give us that?
Yes, ma'am. Out of the 5.3 of ARPA revenue replacement, this would use, out of that, in addition to the proposed financial partners, this would use the 1.2 out of that money. And Cherry's pulling up a spreadsheet that tracks it.
We love spreadsheets, Cherry, so we'll have that coming up.
And the 1.2 million, is that one-time? That is truly one-time? We're not just calling it one-time, and with the expectation that it's going to be requested again?
So it is, so our committee approved this one-time funding. As you know, Mr. Driggs, as the former Chair of the Budget Committee, financial partners is, they have to apply every year. So it's technically a one-time contribution, because they're going to have to apply again. And what we have done this year, we did not just say, let's go ahead and approve all the financial partners that got funding in the past, right? We have this new process that looks at the value that each financial partner contributes. So yeah, it is a one-time funding. That's why we used ARPA source.
I'm waiting to hear the remainder of this conversation, like Mr. Graham. One-time funding means you have a particular project that is one and done, right? Operating funds, if that's the use to which this money will be put, is not one-time funding. So I appreciate that this offers us a potential speedy solution, and I'm in agreement with these recipients. But if it now turns out that there are 10 other things, then we're going to have to look more critically at how much of this is actually operating and therefore not intrinsically one-time. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Driggs. As a reminder, so now I think we have a motion on the floor to approve the proposed, I'm not quite sure what the word would be now, the proposed recommendation from the Budget Committee for the following items that are listed on the dais, on the film, on the screen.
Are we done with discussion?
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Anyone for further discussion? Ms. Mayfield?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I have stated previously, and I am going to restate again tonight, we had two criteria. The first criteria being scoring, the second criteria being not 30% of the budget. I worked with Marie. Staff initially identified a scoring that started at 50%. We were able to redo those numbers and bring it down, in some cases, to 47.77, 42.99, 45.51, based on the five categories that each organization was able to self-select for. I had said, and I am glad to hear, that my colleagues are not trying to add organizations that did not apply yet, based on the scoring, some of the organizations that my colleagues have identified did not score well. So if we go back to the printout that Marie had shared at our last budget meeting that had specific items highlighted in red, they were highlighted in red for my proposal based off of that 30%. Some of them, I find it difficult to say that I'm going to have limited funds. We all know we received 50 applications, we had over 8.8 million in requests. I initially asked, how much do we have to even have this conversation? I was told 1.5 million. In actuality, it was less than that. Staff's proposal was 812,000. When we're talking about the one-time funding, and we're talking about the opportunity to move forward in the proposal that I had submitted and recommended, we actually had additional organizations that were being funded, because they actually did score well, and that would have cost us only additional 444,000, actually 800 and some change, because one organization was left out. What is this additional cost now from the original 812,000? So now, we're still like at four and some change. How much are we asking? 43 million of ARPA, that we know we want to try to last for the next few years when we're looking at shortfalls? We're looking at over a million-dollar request in ARPA, as well as funding organizations that did not meet the two basic criteria. Even though there are organizations in here that I personally love, and I would love to help fund it, I have to stick to what I initially said last year and the beginning of this year, that if we create these two criteria, then I'm going to stick to these two criteria. So therefore, I am not going to be able to support some of the recommendations, even though some that were recommended are, so the yellow, seven, and you score 46.5, or you were over 30% of the budget, I cannot support it, and I'm not going to be able to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayfield. I do want to ask if you would like to make a substitute motion?
No.
All right? Okay. Thank you very much. So we have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Keep your hand up, yes. So.
Mr. Peacock just got him.
Okay, okay, okay. Let's just, let's just go ahead with this. All of you that are opposed, please raise your hand. Ms. Mayfield, thank you. Thank you. I think that was a great point, Ms. Mayfield, and I think that one of the things that we didn't clarify was referring the actual graph that you had put together to a committee to make that decision. It'd probably been a little bit smoother, so, but we've got another time and another day to start. So thank you very much. All right, so what's our next step, Mr. Jones?
I think, Madam Mayor, Marie has now queued up different questions that were asked at the adds and deletes with price tags associated with them. I'm not so sure you've moved off of financial partners, and if you have, that's great. I thought, Mr. Graham?
We still have that policy that's still in the committee.
Okay, okay, great. With that being the case, then, Marie then has cast out a number of the questions that were raised at the adds and deletes.
All right, so would it be easier to start out with each council member, so that if there's an add and delete? Oh, it's, you've got it up there. Thank you.
And she'll go line by line.
Let's go with this. Ms. Watlington, yes?
Yes, I'm sorry. I should have said this before the last vote. I serve on the Board of CMR, so if it's possible to recuse me from that particular vote for funding for that organization, yeah, you're okay.
So again, if I could hear, what's, what's the Board?
Carolina Metro Reds.
Carolina?
Metro Reds.
Metro Reds, okay. So we need to have a motion to excuse Ms. Watlington?
So move.
Second.
All right, we have a, from that vote, just that particular one vote, so.
So in that, the budget adjustment was for the whole list, so do you want us to separate that out?
We're going, oh my gosh.
It's, well, I asked to reconsider the motion.
Right. All right, so this would be $50,000 that we would remove from?
No, no.
Not remove from them, just remove from that vote, the separate vote.
Just a separate motion for the $50,000 for Carolina Metro Reds, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? I think everybody understands this is because.
Let me just clarify, the motion would be to remove out of your prior approval that item, and to have a separate vote on the recusal, and then have a vote on the item.
So it's going to take a few steps for us.
Yes, sir.
Well, then let me just ask this. If there is, if there is a conflict of interest, then you don't have to ask to be recused, correct? You have to be recused, because you have a conflict of interest?
The conflict doesn't automatically give you the recusal, the vote, there has to be a vote recognizing the conflict, and then to allow you to be recused.
Okay, we have a couple of people that have questions about this.
A manifest financial conflict is a cause for a recusal. You may ask to be excused if you're concerned about the appearance of a conflict, and the council can vote on whether you should be excused.
Exactly, that's what I understood. And so my question is, does being on a board necessitate that as a, because I'm making a decision?
Pass, it hasn't. I remember going back to Harold Condo and so on, that he, LaWanna, you may recall. So being on a board of a nonprofit doesn't constitute a grounds for a recusal. If you were concerned about the appearance, you could ask us to vote to excuse you.
Okay, well, in that case, as long as it's not, it's not, doesn't fall under actual conflict, then I will rescind my request.
As much as I love our council, Mr. Driggs, I'm going to ask our city attorney if he would tell me the answer to that question.
You've done it several times before.
But sometimes, you're right, councils will allow people to recuse themselves to avoid the appearance of a conflict, even though it may not be an actual conflict. Here, though, the council member requested to be recused, based upon her service on the board. The law provides that recusal will technically is required, and you're excused from voting where you have a financial or pecuniary interest in the outcome. If board service doesn't necessarily confer that upon a board member. But if, it's the council's discretion to what, to allow her to, and to honor the council member's request for recusal, but now the council member has withdrawn that request, and is comfortable with the analysis, so therefore you can let the vote stand.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry about that.
That works for me.
Is that okay? All right, everybody understand what Mr. Fox just said? And so because of that, because of the, it was a question more than a statement. I think that's really what we found out here. So with that, we're going to take this first motion, and then I want to recognize Ms. Johnson. So on the motion to, we're going to be at the same place, so Ms. Johnson, I think is up next, because we've decided that Ms. Watlington did not have a conflict. So Ms.
Well, my question's next, Mayor Pro Tem.
There is no motion.
There is no motion.
There is no motion. I'm recognizing Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. I was just going to add to that, we all serve on boards that we, that are included on the budget, in the budget. I mean, there's University City Partners, there's Blumenthal, we, we all are appointed to boards, so that would be clarification.
I think, but the answer will be whether or not your board service adnursed your financial interests. You can serve on a board, but some boards are paying boards. So if you have a financial interest, and that does suggest a conflict.
So that's the difference, if it's a paid, okay, that's, that's good. That's good to know, okay.
Okay. Everybody squared away? All right, thank you. So then our next item, yes?
So Mayor, I think where we're headed now is that Marie now has all of the other items that came out of the adds and deletes with a cost associated with them that's available for discussion with the council.
And I guess one of the questions that I have, would it be okay if we started around, and we could start with Ms., Ms. Brown? Is there anything on this list, or anything, I'm sorry?
What did you say? The manager recommended to do line by line.
I'm asking if there's any additional information that anyone wants to put up on this board.
I thought we couldn't do that.
I believe that we said that we would have the ability that you could have an adjustment today. So I'm just asking, let's go around and just make sure that if everybody is, does anyone have an additional adjustment to the things that are on the board, on the wall? All right, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. So this came from the community, I'm not sure if anyone else received this, but there is a request for $300,000 in ARPA funding for Helping Hands Foundation to provide assistance for water bills. The Charlotte Water Director, Charles, has a vision to ensure clean water is accessible to all through assistance in paying their water bill, and they asked, could we bring that up? Is there, I know with Duke Energy and other utilities, there is opportunity for assistance. So if we could have something for our residents to assist with the water bill, I think if there's an opportunity for that, I think that's important, especially when we know how unaffordable housing is in the city. So, thank you.
All right. All right, Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mayor Council. I'd like to add, we're hosting the NAACP 116th National Convention here, July 12 through the 16. Mecklenburg County has said that whatever we do, they would match, so this is a great potential partnership for us. So I'd like this council to consider a one-time to support NAACP convention for $200,000.
All right. Ms. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a, just a point of clarification, I know we're going around and adding entities that have not submitted any application for financial service to the city. I just want to underscore the comment that was highlighted by myself, Mayfield, Ashmira, and Johnson, as it relates to the Fire Department and Police Department. We, I firmly believe that we should only be using these funds for a one-time use and not any ongoing use. But I just want to just be clear that if we're funding an entity that has not gone through a request, an application process to be a financial partner, I want to make sure that we're taking care of our Fire and Police Department as well in some way. I think it's a slap in the face, really, to the civil servants to say someone that hasn't gone through the process can usurp the process, jump in front of the line, when they're putting their life on the line every day. Literally, fire just happened in the back, so, you know, I just want us to be mindful of them. I know we, city manager, you, you try to take care of them as much as possible in each budget, but, you know, they do face these healthcare benefit costs that are out of pocket and a burden at times to them. So just wanted to underscore that, Madam Mayor.
Appreciate that, Ms. Mayor Pro Tem. All right, so let's start over at the beginning again. We're going to start, we've had everyone on this side of the dais, anyone on this side of the room that would like to add anything or change anything? All right, Mr. Peacock?
This was just related to the financial partners, perhaps, this was related to the financial partners, and I just was trying to get some clarification. Councilwoman Ashmira, you can, you can help me to understand, we've got Dream Key Partners that's asking for 390,000, but yet we gave them 231,000. We have Roof Above that asks for 243,808, and they got 100,000. Those seem to be from a priority standpoint, we go from housing someone to many of the services below that. And so my recommendation for an add would be add 159,000 for Dream Key Partners to bring them up to 390, and then add 143,808 for Roof Above to match that request. Those are my two adds to the request here, and I'm simply, I'm simply saying, I feel like they should get the full request.
So, Mayor, Mayor, Mayor.
Yes, I think it's addressed to you.
Yes, Madam Mayor, so the reason you see there are two columns, one is the request fiscal year 2026, and the second column is the May 19 meeting, which was our budget adjustment meeting. So at our budget adjustment meeting, council members that made this specific request, whether it be for Dream Key or Boom Charlotte, it was to match what was approved in the previous year, because not every partner received what they requested. So we matched the fiscal year, last fiscal year's approved funding. So Dream Key Partners got 231, that was what was requested at our May 19 adjustment meeting. Same thing with Roof Above, that was the request that was made by our colleagues on May 19. So we pretty much approved what was requested at our adjustment meeting.
I mean, Councilmember Ashmira, I've obviously come on to this, to this dais here very recently, but I'd find it hard to believe that they would ask for less than what's actually here.
I'm talking about, not, not their request, I'm talking about the council member's request. So May 19 was our budget adjustment meeting. So budget adjustments was something that was requested by a colleague or two. There were some of these requests that were specifically made by our colleagues on May 19.
And that's what we're doing now. I'm making the add right now, so I'm making the request that we add the money to that. I'm asking that you add this in the adds and deletes, 159, and in 159. I'm asking that you add this in the adds and deletes, $159,000 and then $143,000 to round it out to exactly what's here. Why? Because when you look at the numbers here as it relates to everything else, I don't, to me, from a ranking standpoint, and I've, I know a lot of these organizations, they do amazing work. But you've got Dream Key Partners and Roof Above at the top for a reason. And I think that they should be funded at the full level that they've requested, just like crisis assistance is going to get $825,000.
I hear what you're saying. I, I guess this is not in specific order, the list that you see here. This was just based on what was first requested by my colleagues. So I hear what you're saying. In fact, I was one of the council members who requested Dream Key and Roof Above to be added, because in the proposed budget.
They should get more. That's what I'm saying.
I, I hear you, but I guess at our budget adjustment meeting, we did not.
For the Struggle, Inc.
So I think that it is, it is acceptable to ask for the addition, and then that would be.
That's why we put it up here. That's what this whole exercise is about.
That's exactly right, to make sure that everybody has the opportunity that they choose. And so what, Mr. Peacock has asked that we have, let me see, I'm not doing the math. Do you have the math?
$159,000 for Dream Key Partners and $143,808 for Roof Above.
All right, so we will have, we will continue this discussion, okay? All right, so I believe.
We're still, we're still coming around. We're still coming around.
I don't know what the order was. I'm talking to the mayor, we got one. Madam Mayor?
Yes, yes, I.
Are you coming around?
I am coming around. That's why I'm on this side. That's Mr. Peacock. We're going this way. All right, here we are.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Manager, I have a question for you. So I recognize that right now, we might not be able to do it with this current budget, and especially with the way that $5.3 million is going very quickly. But can you look into, over the next few months, and identify, and really it's going to be your team, ways that we can help specifically to increase the compensation for our employees who are below the median for City of Charlotte employees? So I took on the fun job of looking at our open data portal, and, which we already know HR has put some funding. I had initially made a comment to request 1.5 to go to that. I'm not going to put in the formal, because we don't have no money left, to try to figure out how we continue to help our lowest-paid employees. But if we can look specifically at all employees that are making below median, not the median of the city, for our City of Charlotte employees. Because we have employees out there that make 30, 40, 50. We have employees that make 280-plus. So for the median of our city employees, what would that look like if we were to bring them up, as we're talking about $23,000 or $24,000 for our lowest-paid employees, and including our council constituent services staff? I, we recognize that they are serving two council members. They work weekends, they work evenings, they're doing our town halls. There is a challenge, which is why I had asked previously about the grades and how that is identified. I didn't necessarily get that information back. But making sure that we are being equitable, because we have new employees that's under constituent services on one side of the building that is paid considerably more than our staff that has been with us for a while, based on our public data information. I'm not going to go through the numbers, so it will be helpful to know if we are able to do that. Also, I wanted, over the last 10 years, we have been able, really the last few years, to increase staff in animal services and control. We've also identified some funding as well as realignment. I want us to look at housing and neighborhood services. We are not 300, 500,000 residents anymore. We are a million. We still have a very small staff, and I recognize even with the Faith and Housing Initiative, that is even more work, but to have a designated investigator, because housing and neighborhood staff, and I believe some council members outside of myself, are receiving a lot more calls from these multifamilies, specifically our senior multifamily units regarding quality of life. And we don't really have the staff to just designate on those investigations. But they are also working weekends, evenings. Warren Wooton and I are going to be going out to a senior development in a week or so for evening conversation. And I've already reached out to the North Carolina Finance Housing Agency. They are receiving a lot of complaints from Charlotte with these developers that know how to work the system. So we have some challenges going on, so I would really love for us, since I believe Marie told me it's about 73, 70, 70-plus percent of our budget is in employee and in staff wages. But we have some departments that have really seen an impact from the growth of the city and the needs that we haven't necessarily added on. And I know, and I have not reached out to our director, Ms. Hefner, so she doesn't even know that I'm asking you, and she's probably back there scared right now. I know for all the meetings I'm having and all the emails that I'm having to send to staff, I would love for us to really look at what would the impact be for us to look at hiring the necessary additional staff. I think it's maybe like two to three people, but having a designated investigator for everything that's going on, along with the initial recommendation that I made, where I did ask if, what would be the dollar amount if we were to create a grant, much like HR is doing, for other employees to help with offsetting the costs and putting requirements around it, so it's not a free-for-all, but to help our public safety employees, since we have wages from $40,000 on up, and the cost of insurance could be a barrier. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Watlington, Ms. Brown?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. So I was getting into the proposed budget that we're looking at, and I know that staff did a very good job of going back and shuffling and trying to make sure that we could appease everyone that's on this list. And so whereas some of my colleagues, Roof Above does great work, I advocated for them. So did Councilmember Ashmir. They do great work. We just don't have the money to stretch that wide. So if we get into, let's add, go back to the list for me, Ms. Marie, please, if you don't mind. It's the list right here. If we get into the list, if we go to saying what a person or organization asked for, but we didn't get them to their request, but we have them on, I, I definitely am advocating for Roof Above as well, but I'm also advocating for Save Our Children movement, as well as for the Struggle, Inc. Great, I don't want to get into, you know, Hearts for the Invincible, Just Do It. It's so many organizations. We, our staff worked, and they pulled and they told for a reason to come up with this for us, so that we would, it would be reasonable, and we can move forward, trying to spread the love everywhere. We get into the people's budget, and I'm the number one advocate for the city workers in their income coming up, to $25 per hour. That's not even enough, because they work their fingers down to the bone, so we won't even speak about that. But if we also go to our constituent services, yes, I agree with that, but also agree with people that own salary. You can't put a price tag on a person's worth. And when people come to work, they work their fingers off. Mayor, you hear me? I'm not done.
It's trying to do too many things.
It's okay. I understand. We've got a lot going on with a little bit of time that we're trying to get things across. But I won't repeat it. We could just go back and look at what I said. But everybody deserves to be paid their worth, and who, you can't put a price tag on that. So the order of operations would be, I support the people's budget 110%. And so our city workers on the front line, police officers, fire chief, fire, everybody. So we, we tried to come with some type of structure. While we won't all walk away and agree to what we're saying, it's going to continue to be ongoing. Our staff worked really hard to put this together for us. So I, I'm not going to keep going on and on and on, but for the record, it's the people, people's budget for me. And, you know, I'm just going to, I yield back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. So I know that there has been some discussion about some things that people would add. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page, because anything that we do in addition will have to come out of the ARPA money. So I want to make sure everybody's comfortable with that, because that's where the changes will be made for additional funding that people or council members have requested, all right? So with that, let's go line by line to make sure that we're okay. And I'm going to start, I believe, Marie is going to take.
And Madam Mayor, this is going to be for another motion that we're doing, or we're just discussing line by line?
No, this is, we've completed, I think, I wanted to make sure, but unless you have something that you want to put on the table, this is all, we're ready to now assign where we would get the funding and look at what, whether or not we can make it fit. That's what I'm saying. We need to make sure that we are doing it in a way that everybody understands, that additions can be made, and that will be voted on. And if it's voted on, it will come from ARPA money to fulfill anything that was an addition.
And so what's the amount in the ARPA money right now?
The ARPA money is one time, $5,300,000, and that's where we would go.
Which is untouched right now, right?
I know, we're going to go through this line by line, okay? Because if we do it a different way, then it will get confusing, right?
Okay, so, no, ma'am, I'm sorry to answer your question, Ms. Brown. It's 5.3, but you voted earlier.
At one point?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just wanted to be clear on that, okay?
All right. Okay, does everybody get, Marie, what we're looking at now is the $5.3 million in ARPA funding. And the request that we had earlier when we started on this side, let's go through what you have listed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And rolling it as we vote, okay?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And the next one would be, Ms. Molina brought up previously to fund, and this is separate from their financial partners applicant, application. The Charlotte Museum of History requested us to sponsor an exhibit coming forward for them for $350,000.
All right. Ms. May, I'm sorry, I'm saying Ms. Mayfield.
One of those.
Ms. Johnson, I'm going to go really.
No, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just really quickly, and I, the, the exhibit, I know that we have already approved $100,000 for operations for Charlotte Museum of History. But this separate, this separate ask, would this actually have to come from ARPA, Mr. Manager? Or is this something, or Marie, can you answer that for me? Would, is this something that would have to come from ARPA, or is there any other way for us to procure this ask?
So thank you, Councilmember Molina. As long as it's one time in nature, I would say that there's, that $5.3 million is ARPA-related. There's also some money that I used in the proposed budget that was, I believe, ARPA interest, if I got that right. And we did some things, like the bonuses for the police or what have you. I think what's most expedient is to use the $5.3 for tonight's purposes. I think in the information that was shared earlier, I think the county has put $350,000 in their budget for this purpose. And I, I would look at this more like tourism. They were bringing something to the city, much like the Picasso exhibit, that provided something that we did not have beforehand. So that's just the way that I believe that this has been positioned.
Okay, so just to, to add to this, because I know that from my discussions with the leader of the Charlotte Museum of History, I think they're, the, the total cost of that exhibit is like a million dollars, and I think the county has already given them, if I'm not mistaken. And I, I don't know that to be true or not, but I think the county has actually already provided them $300,000 for that exhibit.
I think that's what's in the proposed budget.
I think the county has already given them a portion of the exhibit cost. And so I think they're doing private fundraising. They're asking us for a portion. And I think the county has already decided that they would give them $350,000 as well. It's included in their budget, but not decided yet, yes, ma'am, for the county.
All right, so that's what you would like to have. Let's do the, what's the amount again?
It's $350,000 is the total ask for the exhibit. It's, it's a separate ask. Yes, ma'am.
All right, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to be consistent. Mr. Manager, you, you mentioned that the, this, this exhibit could fall under tourism. And, and even in looking at the recommendations, I said the last meeting, the Charlotte Boom, that's, that's definitely tourism. So I just want to say consistently that we, as a council, really should take a look at utilizing our tourism funds for things that are tourism-related. I know it's not something we've done in the past, and I know what happens in Raleigh, but it's something, if we, as a council, really start looking at it to consider these dollars to be utilized before we have a deficit, or before we look at increasing property taxes. If there are items or, that really fall under tourism, we should really start to begin to take a look at making changes or talking with our colleagues in Raleigh in expanding the use of the tourism dollars. I don't have the numbers in front of me. We went through a whole exercise the last meeting, if anybody wants to take a look at that. But we know that there are, there's extra dollars in our tourism funds, and these are the, the dollars that pay for the improvements to the stadium and NASCAR. So if we start to take a look at tourism activities, such as Charlotte Boom, and such as the traveling exhibit at the museum and other items, I think it would allow us to pay for, to leverage our dollars a little further and pay for items, you know, that, that benefit the public, we could use those from general funds. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so let's get your, Mr. Mitchell?
Yeah, I, I just want to remind council, this one is a tough one for me from this standpoint. We currently have six facilities we currently own. And those six facilities have exhibits all throughout the year. And, and, and I'm afraid if we start this process, I don't know how our six partners would, would feel that we would give money to exhibit, exhibits as long as people would, would ask. Here, and I got to yield to Protem and Marjorie. I think there needs to be a conversation, how do we sustain the Charlotte History Museum? And if you all were open to it, I think this needs to be a conversation. We can refer to the committee. And A, we need to make a decision, are there going to be a city-owned facility? That'll make seven. And how do we sustain them in the future? But I'm just a little leered about us supporting an exhibit when our other six facilities that we own, they never come to us and ask for a contribution. So I'm just a little, I'm just a little word direction we are going when, I know the Harvey Gant Center and the Levine Museum, and I'm just, I'm just, I'm just a, I just want us to be a little cautious about this one. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you for that comment. All right, so now I believe if, Mr. Jones, if you can get the staff so that we can get this.
Right, okay, I want to make sure I can be helpful with, with this. So it seems like it's not necessarily funding the exhibit, but where the money comes from. And so I believe that as that infusion fund, which is now gone, money was raised, there was more money raised than the money that was distributed. raised than the money that was distributed. So I guess the question is, now that the Arts and Culture Board is dissolved, is there a discussion to be had about what remaining funds that were over-raised by the private sector that could be used for some things similar to this exhibit and maybe some other things that our partners would love? And I would love to have that conversation with Laura Clark.
Okay. All right.
I don't know you were.
I'm not quite so sure that that was, so we have a lot of comments. Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I just, we're having recurring conversations about the Charlotte Museum of History. And I recall our conversations last year around this time about them. And there was an opportunity for us to put them, add them to the list of the infusion fund entities. And that opportunity went by unsuccessfully. But I would like to just raise that back up to the council. I don't want to repeat everything that you've heard from me and Ms. Molina, but they serve, they have, they do a great service to the community, to the entire city. But specifically, there's some double-clicked emphasis on East Charlotte residents. I would really like for us to consider if we could, City Manager, have the Charlotte Museum of History added to that list of blue bloods, if you will, that have access to those infusion dollars. Because it's a recurring need that they have. And just like the other museums, I happen to serve on the Blumenthal Board, but just like the other museums, they bring a service, they bring an element of tourism, you know, and they bring a level of culture to the fabric of the city of Charlotte. So I just want to bring that back up from last year. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So I am assuming that you would support this initiative for the 350,000. So that's, we'll come back around, but I just want to make sure that I've captured that correctly.
Right. Well, what I would say, just for clarification, is I think what the City Manager said about infusion fund dollars that were directly targeted towards arts and culture, I think that would be a great source for this type of ask rather than our ARPA dollars. And I'd really love for us to be good stewards of these ARPA dollars and to not spend, allocate the total amount during this budget cycle because it presents an opportunity for additional interest to be compounded and present more opportunities. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Jones?
I would like to add one point of clarification. So when we start to think about, so the infusion fund is over with, and now it's the collaboration between the city and the county, about 21 million dollars. What the county has done with their 10 million, for any entity, let's call it the bigs, that the city provides operating funds for, they have a bucket of 3 million dollars for educational programming. So last year, the county manager and I had a conversation, and she said, well, Marcus, if you guys are able with the Charlotte History Museum to provide some of the operating funding, then that's like all of the other organizations that could have access to this 3 million. So I will say that by you putting another 100,000 in the straw vote earlier, it does open it up for access to educational funding from the county. I'm not saying that it'll be for this, but it's a connection to how these dollars work together. Okay. And I think it's important that the county did recommend 350 for this exhibit. Okay?
Okay. Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I like Councilmember Mitchell, probably won't be able to support the exhibit fund for the Charlotte History Museum. I think the 100,000 dollars will help them go a long way to getting what they want to do. And I think we're headed there slowly in terms of really having a comprehensive evaluation about the organization and then making a decision on how and to what extent do we weigh in, right? I'm not sure we just put them on the list. I think they got to find a way to get on the list, and we should try to find a way to assist that, right? So I think there has to be criteria informed. I think it's just some work has to be done before we take on that lifelong commitment because it will be a lifelong commitment for sure, right? And so I think we need to kind of figure it out. Not saying that we shouldn't do it, but I just think we just need to figure it out and be forward-thinking, diligent, and ask some tough questions beyond the fact that they're not in the group, they need money, so we should give them money, right? I think that's, for me, is a little bit more complicated. Secondly, I do like the ideas about maybe them being in the infusion fund, right? Just need, I need to make an informed decision for me to say yes. Councilmember Johnson, I'm just going to say one more time, with all due respect, about the tourism fund, these are relatively small numbers that we're looking at in comparison to our operating budget. Today, we had an ED committee meeting where we talked about spending 25 million dollars out of the tourism tax NASCAR for the NASCAR Hall of Fame, and we got more requests than we have money, right? So I think even with that, there should be a way to support arts through our general operating budget. These are small expenses that I think we can find within our budget to accomplish the same goal, the objective, without using the tourism tax as a credit card, right? Because we deal with big numbers. And it would just, again, just open up so many cans and worms that I, as your chairman of the committee, I just advise us, just please not do that. And we've already asked and answered that question on so many occasions. I think we just said, I just hope that we could find a way to solve the problem without that being an option. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Molina?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And first off, I want to say to my colleagues, I definitely appreciate the input. I think, first of all, I cannot tell you that I disagree with the need to have a deeper conversation because, you know, in some of the correspondence that I know that I've received, and I'm sure that the Mayor Pro Tim has received from residents that live on the east side, they have looked at this and seen support for other institutions and not really understood that we have a responsibility to the other institutions because we own those institutions, right? And we do not own the Charlotte Museum of History. Therefore, these are funds that we are extending to a private institution. And it would make it comparable to any other decision that we make for private institutions. But, and I'm open to, and I think it would be wise of us, to have a deeper conversation on how and in what way we will support that institution going forward. The challenge for us on the east side is that there are not many locations for people to host events and to do things and to have gatherings. And so the institution has centralized itself as a place where people gather on the east side. And so to that extent, I think as a council, you know, especially with us now putting them on a potential list where they can now have access to other funding and things of that nature, I would like to, Mayor or council members, have a deeper conversation on what that means for us. Like, since we have extended the 100,000, those are one-time funding opportunity amounts, right? But then there will be next year, right? And there will be, how do we address this next year? And, you know, the challenge for us is that we look like we're not meeting the ask, but the ask is individual, like any other private institution, as opposed to it being a side-by-side ask with the city-owned assets that we have. So I definitely agree with the idea of, you know, maybe BGIR, having an additional conversation at some point about, you know, this particular institution or institutions like it, to decide, like, what do we do as a body when we have similar asks? Mr. Manager, I love the idea of us looking at them as an infusion partner, potentially. I don't know if that means that they somehow compete with the others or how that process goes, I don't know. But I agree with my colleagues in that I think that would be a wise way for us to support them in this one-time endeavor since we have a specific bucket for arts. I don't know if that's possible. And as far as our ARPA dollars, can someone tell me when they expire? Like, when do we have to spend them by? They don't expire?
Once you spill, once you use them, that's it.
Okay. So that's, so they don't expire? So...
Because you did revenue replacement.
Ah, okay, okay. And that's, okay. And that's all I have. Thank you.
So I want to make sure that as we're going through this, that so far we have the Museum of History at 350,000 for a discussion. But I think the thing that referring to committee is important. I also think it's important for us to be clear and not just ship the funding out. I know that we have, but we may need to have some discussion around what information is necessary in explaining so that everybody knows what they're getting and why. And I think that that's something we can do, well, not, without having some idea of how people can understand this, we want them to have something in writing. I think that's one of our things that we ought to try to do and accomplish when we're doing this. This is in writing, this is what it's going to be. And so what we have here is, I think, all of the speakers for this has been, have been around, yes, infusion fund, but also, yes, discussion and referral to our committee. Okay. So let's go to the next item. If that's acceptable, let's go to the next item. So Marie, can you, Mr. Jones?
Sure. So the infusion fund is over. There are some dollars that were over-raised. I just don't want us to walk away tonight thinking that 350,000 dollars is going to come from the infusion fund. There'll be a discussion about some of the leftover dollars and could it support something like this. And I hope that that's what the takeaway is.
Okay. Everybody?
Is that what would be best, Mr. Johnson?
Well, I think you get a vote.
You get a vote on the 350 from ARPA?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that... Ms. Mayfield?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Marie, question. Since council's already approved that 1.237, should that not be removed so that we can see an accurate running tab of what the requests are?
Yes, ma'am. Cherry added it at the top beside the 5.3. So it's now...
So right now, based on all of the ads, minus the 1.237, you're saying, based on all of the ads that have been recommended, what's that total?
Oh, sorry. Yes, ma'am. If you'll scroll down, Cherry, please. It's within the amount. But there's something, when I say that, there's one in there that's, when we get to, it's ongoing. And that would make the budget structurally unbalanced because it's an ongoing fund. I just need to put that caveat out there.
So which one is that one?
That is the one that is to understand cost to increase minimum wage to 25 dollars an hour. That's the only ongoing one on the list, ma'am.
So as of right now, minus the 1,237, what we're looking at is 5,281.56 of all the ads since we've had no deletes. And right now, those, the majority of that is being requested from the 5.3 of ARPA dollars that we had left that we thought would be able to fill some gaps for the next couple of years.
That's correct.
Just wanted to clarify.
All right. Okay. So the next item that we have, I think, is the pay plan. I know that you're moving this, but can we stay at this one page here unless somebody calls, asks for something specific?
Yes, ma'am. Just so I understand your process. I believe you said you wanted to go one by one, so we, I don't know if you were wanting to make a vote.
So the next one is allocate funding over a three-year period. We've talked about to support city staff, supportive services. And I think Ms. Mayfield just addressed that. Is that correct? Am I, okay. And so that would mean that you would, do you want to continue to have that, Ms. Mayfield, on the list? I want to make sure. I don't want to remove anything that you don't want.
So it's two separate questions, Mayor. The 1.5 was, in theory, a recommendation over the three-year period based on what our HR director has already been doing through a pilot since we have employees that have needed additional assistance. Whereas the separate question was in regard to finding out what would that dollar amount for healthcare be and whether or not we have the ability to have a grant, for lack of a better word, to help those where if they, if they hadn't met their deductible because their deductible was so high, but they still need assistance, it potentially can be in, out of that million because the question, the 1.5 I was asking for was over a three-year period. I'm hoping that the needs of our employees aren't at this million-dollar level that has pretty much been around 100,000 so far. But if we have it over the three-year period, hopefully the interest will help us build some of the funds. So that was my initial thought with that particular request. Manager Jones, does that seem feasible to say for me to leave the 1.5 in for that three-year period, but also the possibility of the other, the offset, if it's a grant model, that it can be for food or medical or medicine, whatever it is, we create a umbrella so that if there is a need that has been proven, that staff will be able to access it?
Wow. Okay. So, yes, I'm never going to turn down an opportunity to do things for staff.
But if I may clarify, do you want me to...
I'll help you out. Okay. So the 1.5 over a three-year period makes sense. A few rows down, the 980, that is what concerns me a bit because it's, it's, that's our best guess at a group of people who may select healthcare that doesn't begin until January of 2026. It's super, super complicated. I know where you're trying to go. It would be very helpful if we could figure out something other than the grant. And I'm not sure the 250 dollars for everybody, because that's the way it's going to happen.
And see, that's not the intention.
And I don't think that's your intent, right?
Of it. The intention is on an as-needed basis for the simple fact of July 1, even though you're under your insurance, if you have not met that 4,000, 6,000 dollar deductible, but if you have an emergency event that costs 2,500, and that's going to be a hardship, is there a way for us to assist? Because it's a much longer question, conversation regarding pay and the cost of insurance. The biggest question was, do we even have any options out there? The initial comes back at potentially 980. What I'm asking is, if I was to say now, I will remove the 9, my recommendation of the 980 if we think out of the 1.5, we will be able to provide assistance if needed.
And...
Unless there's legal ramifications and Attorney Foxwood or our HR director, who I saw step in, if she's still in here, they say that legally, that's something we wouldn't be able to do, then that's a challenge in itself. But it might fall under the current program that is happening through HR.
And that's where Marie was trying to save me for myself, is that, what are some legal ramifications of carving out a group of employees?
To have it just for first responders, which was my initial, whereas the current program. And that's why I wanted the clarification so that we know what can and cannot be done.
Sure.
Wait. The 980 that we have up there is an estimation, but there very well may, very well may be legal ramifications for why we cannot do that.
And I believe what staff tried to do was find a way to do something that could And I believe what staff tried to do is find a way to do something that could pass the test. But once again, two hundred and fifty dollars for everybody in, um, public safety related is not what you have asked us to do. So I, I hate it that we have something up there with a number that doesn't come close to what your issue is.
So Marie, for me, you can redline the nine eighty because it's not going to get to the core of what I'm trying to address. But manager, I want us, once we get through the budget, to have a very realistic conversation because one of the other asks that came specifically from discussions with our fire department is the previous rate was a rate that was manageable. The new rate is a rate that potentially could cause some challenges. We pay eighty percent of the insurance, even though the costs are still relatively high. I think if we're able to go back to the question that I asked at the beginning of the meeting regarding our, our city of Charlotte, AMI, lowest-paid employees, some of them that are in that forty thousand range versus those who are much higher, if we're able to make appropriate adjustments, because that two point five pay increase does nothing when the cost of insurance went up three percent or went up three point five. So what does that look like to ensure that our employees have access to quality healthcare? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and so that means the adjustments have been made. A delete, so, thank you, Ms. Ms. Mayfield, you are really doing it for all today, so thank you. All right, so we're going to take off, um, how much would a request for proposals and take off that nine hundred? And, uh, health, review healthcare benefit costs for police and fire and delete that, okay? Thanks very much.
Mayor, you would go back up to line thirty-one?
I know, we're going back to thirty-one. Allocate services over a three-year period to support city staff supportive services. Who had that one? Okay, Ms. Mayfield?
Thank you, Mayor. That one was mine, and that was the continuation of if we can allocate one point five million for that three-year period to help our staff since we learned staff have had to utilize, have needed assistance, whether it was for rent, groceries, medication, whatever it was, and a pilot was started. This is a recommendation for us to actually have a bucket available. I do not anticipate all one point five million being spent, but if we have it over a three-year period, hopefully that will help create sustainability as we continue to work to increase the salary of our lowest-paid city employees.
So Mr. Jones, um, where does this sit inside the organization?
Thank you, Mayor.
Or if it, if it's approved?
It would be HR. We started a couple of, um, programs this year, and they have been, uh, very, very helpful for our employees.
Okay, all right. So number six is up, so let's go to, um, item, how much would, I'm sorry.
Are we now doing, um?
I was just getting the list and going through every one of them before. Item for allocating funding over the three-year period, is that the one?
You're, you're not voting on it?
Well, I was going to actually, I wanted to make sure we got through all of this because we're taking money from the ARPA money, so I want to make sure that we're still good for that. And then we would have a vote, a vote totally for the next sections. Would that be, is it easier for you to vote immediately?
Yes.
Okay, so if it's.
Because it's crashing our minds.
But I, I just want to make sure that, you know, if it gets short and we don't have the one fifty-nine, we're going to have to make some adjustments, okay?
We have first, right? So, so I.
I'm sorry. All right. Ms. Ashmira says, let's go ahead and vote each time as we have the discussion. Ms. Selena, Malina?
I, I just got a, I just got a, I just got a comment. I think, I mean, and look, I, I, this is, this is, these are all great opportunities, but once we spend this money, it is gone. And I, and I think that has to be the lens that we're looking at this from. And I mean, not to say that we are, you know, not making good decisions at this moment, right? I, I, like I said, I think everything here is stuff that we all feel very, very passionate about. But to understand that, like, you know, because in my mind, and somehow I had the assumption that once, I think we had, I thought we had a deadline for ARPA. I thought we had to, like, spend it by a certain date, but the, the very fact that we, that we could literally keep some of this funding for future opportunities or something we meet next year, um, where we want something discretionary done, I just, next year, I feel like if we're empty, we're going to regret it. And I think that's something that, I mean, I'm not imposing any importance in one over the other, but I'm just saying that literally everything on this screen, if we voted yes to all of it, then all of the ARPA fund.
And I think at the same time, we had people that said we wanted to make this adjustment, and we're walking through this to get to that point of everybody saying this adjustment.
So I suggest, like, I like what you're doing where we have the discussion, I think individually, so that maybe we can grab some context on each one. So then, and then we go and vote based on, I, I, I know that may be a little bit longer, but I think if we can contextualize each one of these and then make informed decisions for voting purposes as opposed to having a conversation and voting, having a conversation and voting, I think if we can test, you know, like you're doing kind of right now, contextualize them, you know, and then have a vote, I, I actually think that's a better way considering that this is to empty out the bucket for ARPA. That's my suggestion, I don't.
I, I think what you're saying is continue on, and if we start moving more quickly perhaps, it would be easier. So why don't we go ahead and start with, um, how much would a request for proposals and contract with an outside firm cost? So the next fight, item thirty-two. Are there any changes or any questions about that one?
Which one is that one?
That's, uh.
See what thirty-two is?
Yeah, uh, thirty-two is, uh, the proposal to submit RFQ, uh, counsel, that is to protect our twenty-six percent that we agree we're going to get on the Bank of America Stadium since we funding it at six hundred and fifty million.
Twenty-seven.
How much is it?
Twenty-seven.
Oh, it's twenty-seven percent? And so that's a five-year contract, and I just think it's important us to send the right message to our small businesses that this is the largest investment we'll ever make, and we want to make sure you participate in on this project.
Okay, that explanation, Mr. Graham?
I, I want to take a different perspective, Councilmember Mitchell.
Okay.
We got an agency in the department, right, CBI?
They can't, mm.
Monica, Monica.
They should be doing, and, right? And, and even if it's, I, I hear, but I, I get it.
We, we got to have real conversations.
I, I, I'm aware, I know what's happening around me, but even, even that, that expenditure should be paid for, by the Panthers, right? I, I'm not sure we should pay to burden that, and, and we got resources that we're spending for tracking and sourcing internally already. Uh, and a million dollars, that should be something that they should bear, uh, and we should have quarterly or by yearly check-ins to make sure that numbers are being achieved.
So Mayor, could I do a follow-up? I just, I just want to make sure everybody has the same information. Um, we, we went down this road to Councilman Graham's point probably in July, and, uh, there wasn't a lot of interest on behalf of our Panthers for minority participation.
That's not true.
And, and, and so, Councilman Graham, I'm just saying, w- we need to make an, an investment where we're trying to accomplish i- if they're not willing to step up and, and be committed to minority, small business participation. And so, um, they have hired Clock Construction. Clock Construction has hired Carol Lilly, we all know Carol. And I'm just saying over a five-year period and, and city manager, if, if we think we can do RFQ and propose it at a different rate, I'm okay. I think the intent is what we need to be clear on, that we intentional of making sure our small business community participated on the renovation.
Yeah, and, and again, Council, without due respect, Councilmember Mitchell, I, I, I think they are committed to, to reaching the goal. And I've been in constant, constant contact with them significantly since the vote. And I care about minority participation too. I'm glad that Carol is on the job. I've been talking with Carol for weeks to make sure that happened. And so I think there, things are in place to ensure that those goals are, will be met without us spending a million dollars.
Mr. Driggs is next. Um, I know, I know, but Mr. Driggs hasn't spoken except once, and I think we've had, Mr. Driggs.
So on, on this point, I agree with Mr. Graham. Uh, we have a lot of contract compliance monitoring processes. It's not just about the twenty-seven percent. We are tracking their performance in all dimensions. There's a whole procedure for reporting and so on. Uh, and I wouldn't, the twenty-seven percent is a generous, uh, offer by them. Twenty-seven percent is a lot. And so for us to go back and sort of act like we don't trust it, and we therefore need somebody on the outside to verify that they actually do it.
That's accurate statement.
Okay.
Speak for one person? That's accurate statement.
All right, I know, but I, I, I'm just saying, I, I, I don't agree, and having been through a lot of this discussion as well on the thing, I believe that they demonstrated goodwill by committing to the twenty-seven percent and that we should just be able to rely on ordinary contract-compliant processes and not spend money to demonstrate that we don't trust them.
All right, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, thank.
I, Ms. Mayfield, I want, Ms. Johnson, and then Ms. Mayfield.
Yeah, thank you, I just wanted to clarify that Mr. Driggs was able to speak before me because he had only speak, spoken once, is that what you said?
No, I was just saying that I'm just looking at that side.
Okay, all right.
Jeez.
So I keep talking about the hospitality tourism dollars and the fact that there's, there's this exclusive fund that we won't even talk about using. So surely if we spent six hundred and fifty million dollars out of this fund, any oversight of that money could come from that fund at least. So I would not support spending a million dollars to ensure that they do what they said that they were going to do, especially when we do have a CBI department. But if there isn't an audit, I would definitely hope that this council would support using the oversight funds from the fund that the original expenditure came from. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Mayfield?
Thank you. Attorney Fox, question for you. So have we completed the negotiations on the contracts with TPE?
We're still working with, um, outside counsel and the Panthers on the contract and contract terms.
So to my understanding, what council approved and what hopefully you and your team are negotiating is we have the clear expectation of what construction will look like moving forward. What we committed to is we would pay as projects are completed. We have some triggers along the way, or are the triggers being negotiated now? Because I hear Councilmember Mitchell's concern with making sure that the diversity of our local community benefits from this multi-year, six hundred and fifty million dollar investment. Do we have the language in place that gives us the clawbacks and the protections to ensure that happens?
Again, we're negotiating the final language, it has not been finalized yet. There was an agreement that relates to the practice facility that is underway. Uh, there is the, uh, the request for council action, as I understood, that was adopted prior to my time, did and was specific with regards to the twenty-seven percent, twelve percent SBE and fifteen percent MWBE. And we're insuring that the language in the agreement reflects that commitment.
So as of right now, Manager Jones, we have not spent any money because the contracts have not been completed yet. So we should, there should be no money from what was allocated spent towards anything with TPE while we still have a contract that has not been signed and completed. So we have not spent any money.
I'm going to make sure, Matt.
That is correct. No funds have been released yet since no agreement's been finalized.
So as of right now, while we're having the conversations, we're still in negotiation. You have a clear understanding as unfortunately having to step in after the fact as our interim attorney of what the expectation from council was regarding opportunities with development. You're negotiating that for us, but right now, nothing has been spent, no final contract has been executed.
That's correct, and the terms that were directed from this council are, we're attempting and will carry forth those terms in contract language.
That helps. So Councilmember Mitchell, I definitely hear the concern regarding making sure that our intentions are met and exceeded, especially in this current political environment, because we are seeing a lot of challenges that are happening specifically for minority-owned businesses and very, and be, very direct, specifically African-American and female-owned businesses. So there is a lot of challenge. I do have a hard time with us funding versus them funding this oversight, especially when the contracts have not been completed yet. Because once the contracts are actually completed and it's clearly identified what the expectations are, I am also under the anticipation that what is going to be presented back to us is going to have some very clear clawback, clawbacks in there if these certain checkpoints are not met and or exceeded. So the million is a hard, is a hard one to just set aside when we don't even have a contract in place yet, and we're in June. And we approved this initially back December, January? June of last year. We in, we in June of twenty twenty-five, and we still don't have this actual contract. Mr. Manager?
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mayor, Members of Council, uh, so, um, I, I'm looking at this a little differently, and it's just like the million five in the proposed budget to help small businesses with the opportunity for the Transformational Mobility Project. Same thing that Daniel Frazier has money set aside to help the workforce be prepared for the opportunities that come with the one cent sales tax, what comes with that. What I read into that is we have consultants all the time that help us negotiate deals and things of that nature, nature. I look at this a little differently, and maybe a million's not the right number, but it is over a period of time, how do we make sure that small businesses are getting the opportunity with the, uh, six hundred and fifty million dollars? How do we make sure that the workforce is getting the jobs that are associated with the six hundred and fifty million dollars? And it's bringing in additional help to make sure that we're aligning the opportunity with the, the investment.
So Mr. Manager, I agree with part of what you said. We have an economic development department, we have an economic development director. Now that we've identified the scope of what her work is, because HR was already taking care of city employees with employment, and your focus and your work is around community as well as small business growth and development, that is a great opportunity for you to actually dig in on what your role is as our Director of Economic Development and Job Creation versus us finding another dollar line item to pay someone else to come in when we pay staff well to do amazing work. Here's falls under your umbrella of your scope of work in partnership with our Assistant City Manager that is over CBI, with them working closely to make sure that we hit those targets. But that falls in the category of the staff person that we already have within the city of Charlotte, in my opinion, you know? Like, we all got one.
I, I know, Ms. Ashmira, then we'll come back around to the two of you. Okay, Ms. Ashmira?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I agree with some of the comments that's been made by my colleagues. Councilmember Mayfield and Graham, I agree with you. Councilmember Mayfield and Graham, I agree with you. We already have a department, but I guess my question is for the City Attorney. Mr. Fox, in the contract that you're currently working on, you're negotiating, are there any mechanism around accountability for the minority small business participation? And, and second question followed by that for our City Manager, Mr. Jones, I know we have an internal audit team. Could you, after Mr. Fox is done, if you could help us understand if there is any audit work being done on our participation, on small business participation for contracts above certain dollars?
Okay, that's all I have.
Well, first of all, the 27% goal is aligned with and incorporates the CBI program and the CBI program allows for the goal as a commitment, but it also allows for exceptions to the goal attainment based upon good faith efforts and we have to keep those processes in place. As I mentioned, we will, the contract language will reflect the council directive for the goals and I will add a caveat, consistent with state and federal law. Because that's an evolving area right now. So we will, but we will carry forward the message and the edict from this body with regards to the goal attainment and achievement.
All right. I have a question for you.
Yes, and so there was an audit of CBI last year and there's going to be a follow-up with it. So yes, the internal audit has looked at our CBI program and how we are accounting for spend, yes.
So Mr. Jones, to follow up on your comment earlier about consultant, if we already have the department, CBI, as well as the internal audit team, then we have external auditors that does render an opinion, then we have City Attorney's Office, do we still need a consultant to do an assessment?
I, I'll leave it alone. I will tell you, there are other cities that are, they're hiring Ice Miller, they're hiring a bunch of consultants, because this is a patch that we, we haven't been through before. And so, but, but that's it, we would not be unique in bringing in outside assistance.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you. All right, I had, you, have you spoken on this one yet?
I haven't, but I can.
All right, Mr. Graham?
I'm getting, oh, I forget what I'm going to say, right? Like you, I was going to be here all night. But here's the thing, right? I am not opposed to oversight, for sure, Councilmember Mitchell. I think you're absolutely spot on. We'll get measures gets done, right? So I get it. But I also said the same thing about the Pearl. A lot of commitments we, we made, right, and I said we should be auditing and having these big firms come back to us at least bi-yearly to report on where they're at. And that internally inside CBI, wherever, supplier diversity, the commitment is really, really important, but these big projects, they have a big spotlight on them, like the Pearl, like Spectrum, like the Panthers, like when we do any major renovations at the Convention Center, if we were to do Bojangles, right, very high-profile projects, big dollar amounts, there should be an, an internal component tracking those commitments that were made and signed upon by both parties. So I just think, so this is not unusual, but Mr. Manager, we, we, you know, we need for that department, right, to, not only to connect the vendors with the, with the end users internally and externally, but also to have an auditing function, especially on these very high-profile projects that we shouldn't have to go out and spend a million dollars. And again, if someone's going to pay the bill, it should be the other guys on, off the side of the street. And Carol Lilly is a honest broker, Lilly and Associate, she knows the vendors, she can talk with them from truth to power, right? You know her, right? She's just honest broker and having them on that construction team is amazing and I'm, there's more news to come from that's happening over there. So I think there are enough measures in place with the City Attorney's Office and others. I just hope that we take away from this conversation about a greater spotlight on, on not only the, the matching of folks, but also making sure that on these very high-profile projects, that goes well beyond just the Panthers, there are others, that they deserve the same level of scrutiny, oversight, and that they should be required to report back to the council to let us know what's the score.
Okay. Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Manager, I do remember the audit of the CBI function last year and our discussion around that, which I think is helpful. There are a couple of things here. If there's a tone, if there's a tone of the conversation that we have a department, that we have a little faith that can really oversee this process with a level of accountability to achieve those goals, I, I think that is separate conversation. And I did hear that throughout all of my colleagues' comments, that that's a separate conversation. This is a place that we have not been, Mr. Mitchell and City Manager. This is a, a large amount of money. It's a significant capital outlay and if we're making commitments, I think we need to ensure that we are tracking those commitments and ensuring a level of accountability of how extensively we are pursuing the spend with, with underserved companies. I think that onus is on us. I understand that we might want others to pay for it, but the onus, if it's really a city program, that it's on us to, to oversee, to administer, to enforce and to audit. So when we begin to hand off those types of responsibilities to other entities like this responsibility or others, then it loses its integrity and we really lose the opportunity to make modifications or to even make changes as we go through the process. So this is our program. This is something we want to do as a city. This is the largest spend we've done in a very long time. We are accountable for that process and we're accountable for the auditing process of it. Now, having said that, I do believe we need some outside help and that's clear, just from our conversations over the last couple of years. And given that this is such a high spend, we might want to be strategic and thoughtful about how do we go through this process and allow this process to then inform, you know, how we would oversee the spend on a go-forward basis. So I just want to say that this is a big deal. It's a big moment and it is fully up to us. It's not up to any other partner that, that we're working with. It's up to us. And if it fails, it will be, we will be accountable for it. We can't point the finger at others. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I think this brings up a very important point. Yes, the $650 million, we need oversight, but for every dollar spent when we're expecting minority participation, we talk about this in council meetings constantly. So if we have to ask, how are we going to ensure that this is done? How are we ensuring that this is done generally? I think that that's a, a question that we should be able to answer and that oversight should be across the board. I also wanted to ask, where in our budget is the CBI? Can someone give me the page number of the CBI department? And while you're looking that up, the $650 million that was, that was approved last June, where will that be reflected as we are spending it in the budget? Mr. Manager? So is it going to be captured as one allotment or is it going to be captured as we write those checks? Or how will we in the public be able to see those funds allotted?
Sure. Let me start off by saying, answering the first question, CBI is not going to be reflected in the budget the way it was reflected in the current year. That's one of the proposals I have in front of you, is to take procurement and CBI and merge them together, because clearly we can do better. And this is part of the process, raising that up to a department level. In terms of the funding, Matt, help us out with how that's going to be reflected, the spend for the 650.
As, as far as how the, the dollars will go out? So when general services receive monthly pay applications through the construction manager, and they will review all pay applications to ensure that they meet our, our, our understanding of what the work that's been done, we're verified the work that's been done, once this Tepper Sports and Entertainment and the city have all signed off on the actual pay application, that is when funds would be released. So no funds would be released without general services being able to verify that the work has been done and that would include all subcontractor work. So that'd be an, an opportunity to, to sort of have a tracking of the MWSBE commitment on the actual payment out to vendors.
Matt, I think more specific to the question, it will come out of your, what particular fund?
That will be coming out of the Convention Center Fund, sorry.
Okay, so if someone wanted to track that at any point, they could look at the actual spend next year, I guess, next fiscal year in the, in that fund, right?
There would be a, there would, there would be a, there is a Bank of America Stadium project that would have ability to track all spend on it at any time.
Okay, good. Okay, and so you just said, before those checks go out, that's an opportunity to make sure that they're meeting the standards. And if we could do that across the board, that would be awesome. Like if, and before those dollars are spent, there's these checklists and these outcomes, because surely for that type of money, there's outcomes and outputs and reports, reports that we're going to be expecting. Thank you.
All right, so.
And not just for that money, these are all public dollars, for any public dollars that are spent, we need to be tracking. Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell, and I think this will wrap this up for us.
Okay. So Mayor, thank you. So let me just share all this with my colleagues, just so we can kind of level set where we are. There's a practice facility being built right now for about $42 million. They sent over to our CBI a waiver for $21 million. So I want, so I want y'all to hear those numbers clearly. There's a practice facility being built right now, the cost is $42 million. The Panthers and the current GC sent over to our CBI a waiver for $21 million. So some people say, what's a waiver? A waiver is you ask if we're not going to get any small business minority participation on those trade partners. So let me give you another number. We talking about making a million-dollar investment to get 27% of $650 million, we talking about putting $175 million spending with our small businesses. So we talking about return on investment? If we say a million dollars over five years to generate $175 million for our small business in the City of Charlotte, I agree with Mayor Protim. Then the buck stops with us. So Mayor, thank you. I'm just going to, I want to give you the numbers, so everybody understands the magnitude of what we trying to create in our city.
All right.
Oh, good point. Councilmember Johnson, what happened to the waiver? So the CBI is pushing back on the waiver because they believe in our program and it's not been received very well.
So CBI is doing his job.
But they, they, they need, they need help, they are.
So CBI is doing his job. I, all right, I just, okay. All right, so now I think that we close this out, you've heard the remarks and you've heard what people's positions are. So the next item on our agenda is not, there's one that's, it's on 33 and that has been deleted. Ms. Mayfield, thank you.
Oh, Ms. Mayfield.
Yes, that's, that's what we were, we had another conversation earlier about that one. And so now we're at 34, understand cost to increase minimum wages to $25 an hour. This is an ongoing request. Once we do this, it's not, the, the staff does not recommend that we do this with ARPA funding, because it is not going to be available on a long-going basis. So with that, any questions or comments on that one? Ms. Mayfield?
Thank you, Madam, Ma- Manager Jones, when we're asking about, when I asked about the increase, are we saying this 25 for, again, our lowest-paid workers for the City of Charlotte based on our area median income? So those that are making 14, 15, 16, 17, getting them to 25? Because we were able to get some employees to 23, 24 over the last few years, so that is giving them an additional dollar, but also giving up to $5 to $8 for our lowest-paid? Who exactly is our target in this?
So let me start off where the target was with the proposed budget, okay? So the proposed budget got everybody up to $25 an hour, there may be some with apprenticeships, but nobody, no.
$24, excuse me.
$24, $24, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, no. There's, there's no full-time general fund employee that's making $40,000 a year today. So $24 an hour as of November 1 of this year would essentially get everybody up to $49,920. Did I get that right? Okay. That's, that's all employees that are 40-hour-a-week employees. So going to 25, what, what happens is, it's this thing called compression. So you just can't all of a sudden bump it up to 25 without making adjustments all the way up. So if you approve the proposed budget as of November of this year, everybody would be at $24 an hour, 40-hour-a-week employees. And guys, if I'm missing something, just, I don't want to be wrong. And all, what this does is, instead of it being 24, it moves it to 25. And with that, the reason why it's almost a million is because you have to make adjustments to deal with compression. The only other thing I'd say about this is, we would highly recommend that you don't do one time for this, excuse me, yeah, one time for this, because one, we would have the first structurally balanced budget since I've been here. And secondly, it's going to cost you that again in FY '27, which we haven't budgeted for, because we always do a two-year lens with a structurally balanced budget. And again, as I started off earlier, Councilmember Mayfield, I'm never going to say, don't say never. I try never to say anything that doesn't support employees. I just want to make sure that the, the proposed budget did take another leap forward in terms of getting folks close to $50,000 for our city employees.
So our minimum pay right now is 23?
23, yes.
Any other questions on this item?
Hearing none, let's move to the next one.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Ms. Ashmira?
Thank you. No, I don't see the item that I had requested for parental leave on here, anywhere.
Yes, ma'am. If you scrolled it, Cherry, will you scroll to the bottom, please? And it's answered in your packet on page.
I read it in the packet.
Oh, God, it's on the package, but I don't, okay, I got it. It's all the way down. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so our next item, let me get back to it, is Helping Hands Foundation, one time, $300,000. Ms. Johnson?
So I, I'm not sure if the board reached out to all of the council members about this, but if you have any questions, Ms. Charles is prepared to answer questions. Can we bring her up for just a second?
Are there questions for Ms. Charles? Uh-uh. I don't think there are any questions.
Well, I have a question for her.
I'm sorry, Mr. Jones?
Maybe, Councilmember Johnson, and I can help you and Ms. Charles out. Nothing's came up in one of the committee meetings today. When we started talking about the ARPA funds, maybe in October, there were a number of opportunities for ARPA funds. One was Do Greater. Another one that we listed was the Water Foundation, I'm sorry, Angela, I'm saying it the wrong way, Helping Hands. Another one, I think, was the Boys and Girls Club, which actually applied to be a financial partner. And another one was Caring, which didn't apply. So the only reason I say that is, as we go through this tonight, those entities will still exist, and there may be questions about funding those. And many of these things are one time, but what I'm saying is that Helping Hands has been something that was discussed as opportunities for one-time funding. Yes.
All right. All right, Ms. Charles?
Thank you, yeah. Good evening, Mayor. Council Manager, Attorney Fots, I'm Angela Charles, Director of Charlotte Water. And I will now take your question.
Bless you.
Thank you, Ms. Charles. Currently, if someone is behind on their water bill, what are their resources?
There are many resources in the community, like Crisis or DSS. The objective of Helping Hands is to streamline getting to those resources. And so, for example, what we found out in COVID is that many people in our community don't know to go to Crisis, don't know to go to DSS. If you live in Davidson, you go to the Ada Jenkins Center. If you live in Matthews and Mint Hill, you go to the Matthews Help Center. And so there are many different agencies that serve people in our community who are in need of water bill assistance. And so in COVID, we made over 19,000 phone calls, 15,000 individual phone calls with the assistance of General Services and 3-1-1, to figure out what was going on in our community in terms of why people were delinquent, and were they knowledgeable of the different resources? The other thing that happened during that time is we got over $4 million from different agencies in our community, different churches, different organizations, in addition to the traditional organizations that exist. Charlotte Water serves 1.2 million people. It's time for us to streamline the assistance for folks in our community. This is not a new concept. We're the 13th largest water wastewater utility in the country, and there are large utilities right now who have a relationship with a nonprofit, because people do know to contact Charlotte Water if they have problems with paying their bills. So you can go to many of web sites and pages of other utilities, and there's a link to a nonprofit that is associated with the utility. And then that nonprofit then can refer that particular individual to a nonprofit, and/or with Helping Hands, also have funds itself, because we also found in those 15,000 phone calls, not everybody's going to meet the federal guidelines.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, that's a long-winded answer, but that's, that's the goal.
So it would be a direct partner with Charlotte Water to help with? Okay, and so it's something you would support?
And the agencies in the community.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's not to replace, it's not to replace anything that's existing. It's to facilitate folks in our service area with getting that assistance. And it has to be large enough to cover the customer base of Charlotte Water. So it's not just city of Charlotte only, it's the eight different jurisdictions that we serve, knowing that there are nonprofits all over our service area. So it's disjointed.
Okay, and I know you weren't expecting me to call you up. Do you have any?
Well, I got a speech, but I want to do the speech.
Well, you sure were prepared, thank you.
Yes, I can tell you that this is needed in our community, and I feel qualified to say that, because we made over 15,000 unique calls.
Thank you.
In COVID. We led the nation in this.
Okay. So see, that's the benefit of staying ready, so you don't have to get ready. Okay, so she was ready. So question, do you know how many disconnections there are per month, we'll say?
About 2,000.
Okay, and this would help to streamline that, okay.
About $130 overdue, about 2,000. We have brought that down since COVID. In COVID, we had over 18,048.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the work that you do.
So I can get on my soapbox, I mean, too, but I just want you to understand, this is, and I have to be careful, because I have to, you know, I don't want to give the perception of a conflict of interest. I am ex officio on the board. We created this nonprofit 13 months ago. We had legal counsel from ParkOPo. You know, we created it, but we knew we had to step away from it. Some of you have heard from some of our board members, and they have taken that vision, and they're taking it to the next level for our community. It's going to be transformational.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mayfield, did you have a comment or question?
Thank you, Ms. Charles. So I want to make sure that I'm understanding. It's a new organization that was started. Charlotte Water is an enterprise fund?
Right. There are, go ahead.
Charlotte Water is an enterprise fund.
Yes, ma'am.
We increase the fees on Charlotte Water annually. We see that in our taxes. We also receive in our bills, the ability for individual residents to overpay or offset to help others in community. Are we tracking how much, is the funds, when people do donate extra, though, are those funds going, being directed through Helping Hands Foundation for them to go back out, or are they coming through Charlotte Water?
Okay, Councilmember Mayfield, we don't have that provision yet, but that's where we want to go. That's the Roundup. That's like a Roundup program that other utilities have. And we've contacted our folks in IT and with our billing system to do that, because that is a way that other utilities are getting funds to the nonprofit to help folks, to help folks in their communities. So certainly, we want to, we want to implement Roundup. Right now, we don't have it.
So you're in the process, and when and if the Roundup program is implemented, it's going to be through partnership with Helping Hands Foundation?
Absolutely.
So currently, what other government entities, is, has, is the county funding Helping Hands Foundation?
Not yet. I, I can tell you that I have discussed Helping Hands with the other political bodies that we serve in Mecklenburg County, but I think part of, I always get asked, how much has the city contributed? It's like we're, everybody knows we're managed by the city of Charlotte, so part of this is also, you know, being leaders in our, in our community, so that when we talk to the county and we talk to the other towns, we can say, hey, we've already got the support of the council we report to. Also, understand that any funds that the city of Charlotte gives would be for city of Charlotte residents only. So your point is very well taken. County funds can be used all over our service area. Matthews funds can be used in Matthews. So there's, there's opportunity there with, with where we need to go.
So, because I'm trying to understand, we have an application process? Where we actually get the chance to vet whatever organization it is that's seeking funding? And if I'm hearing correctly, and I want to make sure I have clarification, Councilwoman Johnson, this is a request for a one-time dispersment using the ARPA dollars, that same 5.3 million, to allocate 300,000 to Helping Hands Foundation? Is that this request for it to come out of ARPA as a one-time? Because one-time isn't going to help, based on what I'm hearing from you as the ongoing need, but is your line item 35 for a one-time $300,000 request utilizing the ARPA funds?
I want to support the project. I want to provide assistance for rest, for residents and streamline. If there's a more efficient fund or more efficient way, then I, I'd like to discuss it. I mean, if you have another recommendation, Mr. Jones?
No, I, I think that it's what some of the members of the Helping Hands Board wanted from this council, is $300,000 one-time from the ARPA funds.
So that, the request is one-time from ARPA dollars? So where I have a challenge, again, Charlotte Water is an enterprise fund.
Right.
Seem like there would be a conversation within Charlotte Water for you to identify some funds to go towards this.
Can I respond to that? Our funds that we collect are restricted.
Okay.
And so, and our bond, and our bond covenants prescribe how you allocate funds that come in into the utility. Now, there was a revenue contract on tank funding that this council passed, I guess it was in, in last month. And so that's the only source of funding that is not restricted by our bond covenants. So Charlotte Water, in other words, cannot, we cannot fund Helping Hands. It's, it's restricted by state statute.
Thank you for that clarification. For me, I still would prefer Helping Hands to actually go through our process. In order to be in the system, to get vetted. One of the challenges we saw last year is a number of our organizations, it seemed like it took a long time for them to get their checks. And that is because they were brand new, they had not been vetted, doing the paperwork and doing everything to get them caught up, because again, we're short-staffed in a lot of these departments. It took six, almost eight months for some of the organizations to get the funding, because we didn't do the pre-work that would happen if you actually apply. I would prefer for Helping Hands to apply when it opens up in 2025. So what is it, October, when we open up the new cycle? And actually go through that vetting process versus looking for one-time funding when we have no information on the organization that's been around for 13 months. We have other organizations that's been out here doing amazing work on the ground in the community, and I still say no to them, because you ain't meet the minimum requirements. So to not even have the requirements in place is difficult for me just to ensure your long-term viability.
Yes, and, and that's something that, that the board has been very intentional with, because we understand that Helping Hands needs to be around 20 years from now. As a matter of fact, the foundation of the Carolinas has stated, Jesse Herman, VP of Nonprofit Services, that Charlotte Water should do a class on setting up a nonprofit. So we have set this up with a spirit of professionalism, knowing that 20 years from now, when we're serving 2.4 million people, there needs to be an entity that has a relationship, dotted line with the utility for water bill assistance, and the mission of the organization too, is to also facilitate new connections. So you're starting out with water wastewater, water bill assistance, but we also have people in our community who own wells, septic, it's quite expensive. Yeah, to do that, and so that's, that's part two of the mission.
Thank you, Ms. Charles. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Ms. Charles, thank you for coming and speaking to us. This is something that I think all of us can agree with, you know, I, I think we're all looking for ways to be good partners with the humans we represent across the city. I, and I think this sounds like it's operational in nature. It, and not to say that it's, it's not important, because I, I think, like I said, and I think to Councilwoman Mayfield's point, if we, if we do this one time, understanding that this particular entity sounds as though it has a mission that should be in alignment with what we consider on a regular basis. I think this would be probably one of those organizations that maybe is entertained during this BGIR conversation. As far as what do we do with, with, with partners that are, you know, maybe adjacent, but not, you know, internal to the city of Charlotte's organization, right? And I mean, not in the same lane of conversation, but to say, from a sustainability perspective, how do we make sure that something that is this, you know, institutional to, to what we deliver to our residents, it, you know, its continuity, right? And so not to say that I'm against helping, but I think the one-time help is, is not going to be, in my opinion, the best way to meet this challenge. I, I really do think that this should be something that we have an additional conversation around, you know, how, how we orient around the help, right? Again, it's, it's not internal to us, and it's a challenge to, to, because we do have discretionary funding that we're able to administer, we've put ourselves as policymakers in the lane of being more of philanthropists, right? And, and although there's a lane with the policy and the institution that could be understood that we have, it's not the emphasis of what we do. And so, you know, our fiduciary conversation is really about the continuity of this institution on an ongoing basis, the 14 different departments. How do we ensure their vibrancy? How do we maintain our assets? How do we, you know, promote economic stability so that we continue to grow and not fail? But then in that, we have this, you know, small ability to have a philanthropic, you know, lens in, in how we do that. So I, I do think as we do that, because again, I, I have institutions that I would love to support that aren't going to be supported, so I.
Right.
You know, I think we all feel that, but I, like I said, I just, I, I feel confident that we should support, but it sounds as though the help is more, it, it's more a need for, you know, an operational, you know, longevity conversation so that this institution can continue. That's just an assumption, based on what I'm hearing so far.
Okay. Madam Mayor. Ms. Ashmira?
Yes, thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Charles, thank you for your work on this and for your leadership and your vision. Certainly, making 15,000 calls to understand and assess the need, it's a huge undertaking. I did receive an email, a message from board member, Mr. Greg Phipps, an former council member, for supporting this ask. I, I'm, I'm going to support this ask because the need is there, knowing that you already have done deeper analysis. But I also agree with the comments that's made by my colleague, Councilwoman Mayfield, in terms of our policy, which was recently adopted, and this doesn't quite fit in to our policy. So it, I, I wonder, does that mean, do we open the doors to other organization? But I know this financial partner policy is still on our, is still something that's being worked on, and we are going to fine-tune it, because this is a perfect example of where we, we will, we will need to revise a policy, because this is an organization that, that would benefit from it, but also not just you, but other organizations that might be in the same category. So we look forward to having that conversation to Councilwoman Malina's point at the committee level, and we, we will certainly keep this organization in mind as we are developing the policy and try to perfect the policy that we have for financial partners. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Let's see, I want to add, Mayor and Council, and this is a great opportunity to partner with Mecklenburg County. They have already put it on their agenda because they say, whatever the city we do, we will match. And so, I just think, once again, returning our investments, 200,000, but they are projected to spend about $16 million in revenue in our city. And so, once again, a great opportunity. And we do have the two Blue Ribbon co-chairs in our presence, two corporate, well-known icons. Mr. Lenny Springs, a retired Wells Fargo executive, and a senior VP at Wells Fargo, Ms. Gigi Dixon. And so, Council, I will hope that we will move forward and continue to sell our city.
So this convention that's upcoming, this specific ask is for that?
Yeah, July 12th through the 16th.
So is this one from tourism or from the ARPA bucket?
From the ARPA bucket, yes.
So would this convention bring visitors to our city?
Yes, they're projecting youth-wise with the act of between 500 and 600 youth across the country and adults about 12,000 to 14,000. So just a great way.
So we are looking at significant economic impact.
$16 million.
Which is one of the criterias for our tourism dollars. Mr. Jones, would this something qualify for tourism bucket? I know we have done that for other festivals that bring tourism. So would this qualify for tourism ask?
I can't believe Matt has left the building. Oh, there he is, Matt.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Councilmember Mitchell, for the question. It's certainly a project that I think that we could certainly look at. Typically, we work with the CRVA because they do have programs and procedures as far as recruiting big events. So I definitely think it could be something that we could work with the CRVA to make sure it sort of fits within sort of their bucket and look at the Convention Center Fund because this would be a convention. So it would be something that's potentially eligible for that. Could also be something, depending on how the council wants to look at it, sort of do the ARPA as a backstop while we explore the Convention Center Fund as well.
Okay, yeah, I think that's fair, is for us to look at the Convention Center Fund. And if not, I think, Ms. Ashmira, there might be, I think the question is that this is coming up in the next couple of weeks. And I think that.
And we got the county who's voting tomorrow.
The county that's going to support. And it will mean much to have that support from the county and the city.
That's right.
And this is an important conference in our community and in the city. I think that if you can look at who's going to be here and the number of faith-based housing, I mean, faith-based folks and people that are consistently looking at equity and inclusion. And so, I believe it is of value. But I think that I would really want to have the money out there. If you can get a reimbursement from the CRVA later, that would be much better. So Matt, what Matt suggested is that we can look at it. If it's not, then ARPA would be the option. And did I understand that correctly, Matt?
What I'd say is that it's a possible use of the services. I know, I think, as my grandma want to speak to this as well. I think it's, I think the timing of this and sort of doing the due diligence to make sure, because one of the things that becomes a more challenge with these is making sure where our money is actually going. And if we don't have time to develop the contracts and sort of track and procedures, that can become quite challenging on actually utilizing the hospitality funds because their uses are so restricted. Based on a timing and being expedient, the ARPA funds would likely be better for this particular project. But as a going-forward basis, you know, we always work with the CRVA and their recruitment of these types of events.
Mayor Protim?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I do, and thank you for that, that understanding there. This is a time-sensitive issue. But what I'd like to say is, you know, we have these packets at our desk here. And if you just go to the second page here where it talks about the numbers, just let alone for $200,000 to be matched by the county to have the NAACP convention here, the economic impact is $16.7 million. Even if you took a haircut off of that, still well over $10 million. A little over 5,000 in-person attendees. And what's really interesting to me is this notion around the live streaming and the social media impressions, which all will say, Charlotte, North Carolina. Run marketing teams before and spend money on ads and impressions for 200K. You could not get this amount of impressions and eyeballs for $200,000. So not only would it be fantastic for, opportunity for our city to host the convention and to work intergovernmentally with the county commissioners to provide this ask, it's a tremendous spotlight on the City of Charlotte for several days throughout the summer. So I think this is a no-brainer. Falls right into the one-time spend as well, as we're only asking ARPA to be one-time and not ongoing. So I definitely would support this particular ask, Mr. Mitchell. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too see this as a no-brainer. I do believe we ought to keep it simple, right? And make the one-time allocation from ARPA. It'll probably be the only item that I will support tonight coming from that fund. Because again, I do believe we need to have a rainy day fund with those dollars, for sure. And I don't think we ought to extinguish it. I respect Councilmember Mayfield. While I understand her earlier vote in terms of pending parameters around what we're doing. And I think we would be best served to just be consistent with that, notwithstanding your vote. I get what you were saying. Yeah, but I think we ought to do this one, and it'll be the only one that I'll be voting on tonight.
Want to go ahead and rule one? We have two items that were submitted by our newest colleague. Item 37 and 38, adding funding for Roof Above and adding funding for Dream Key Partners.
No question, I just want us to have a real conversation and acknowledge, we have 1.3 million already allocated to Dream Key. I love Dream Key, also loves Laurel Street, as well as several other organizations that we have in this city. Charlotte Mecklenburg Housing Partnership, now in Livian, we are pass-through, basically, for the funds that have come through. Dream Key is the only organization that we have a designated dollar amount allocated. Plus, you can go through the process to receive housing trust funds, and we will still fund a project as well. Plus, have a designated grant line item. We have to have, that can be a conversation down the road, but they are our only development partner where we, in essence, have three different designated line items to them. We do not offer that to Laurel Street. We do not offer that to Crosland or to any of our other workforce housing development partners. We do not offer that to Historic West End or any of our organizations that have created a trust, that have created CDCs. We do not offer a designated funding line item for you, plus money for grants, plus tell you that you can apply for housing trust funds and still potentially get funded. I support the 1.3 million because they do great work and they are one of our greatest partners, but they are not our only partner. Not to mention our down payment assistance program, which they have an amazing program to get you ready for home ownership. But I need us to have a real conversation that this is the only partner where we have designated dollars that are, in essence, allocated to them. And none of our other development partners have that same opportunity for us to have money that is designated for them to tap into.
All right, Mr. Driggs.
So I have an issue with the one-time description. Just because we're talking about doing it only once doesn't mean it's actually one-time. One-time means, I want to buy a bus, will you help me out? And we buy the bus, or whatever. But if this is just operating support and it doesn't have a unique, non-recurring purpose, then that's not one-time. And just because we only intend to do it once doesn't mean... So I have an issue with that from ARPA funds. And I would love to see us preserve more of the ARPA funds for strategic use in genuine, non-recurring situations instead of putting it into uses that are likely to be the same next year. Thank you.
Mr. Peacock.
Well, I'll just simply say that the test of a good decision is the test of time, Madam Mayor. And I've noticed that Dream Key Partners, in my 14 years prior to being here, have continued to do just that. On the nominal side, again, I'm trying to shore up what I saw from the committee. And when I saw it the committee, I know that it wasn't set up in a manner in which it was alphabetically or scored above. I just didn't see a whole lot of equity in how we were distributing those funds. I felt like we should start with housing first, start with services and other things. And again, it just didn't have parity for me. I share my colleague, Mr. Driggs', comments as it relates to being one-time. I think that one-time label here is probably being broadly used, if I'm just guessing what the committee worked on today, so.
Notice the Republicans said equity, just.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I am equitable. That is a very good comment.
Okay.
That's why I'm here. That's right.
Mayor Protim, before this dissolves into, you know...
All right, what I'm hearing from my colleagues on my left is she's very supportive of this organization. So much so that she wants to fund $159,000, going once, going twice. Are you ready to support this?
Oh, I'm a no.
That's fine. So we have one no. Let's roll. Let's keep moving. I think I've got six.
Mr. Peacock.
I think there's somebody that's trying to rescue you here.
Is that how they did it back in the day, Mr. Peacock?
It was an auction system.
I see.
Mayor McCrory, and they were auctioneers, really.
We'll have to get the mayor one of those cowboy hats so she can be the auctioneer. But seriously, I appreciate the comments from all of my colleagues on this particular issue. I do agree that Dream Key Partner, they're both wonderful partners. They do phenomenal work. I do also firmly believe that we support Dream Key Partners in a variety of different ways. Ms. Mayfield, we, one would, could never look at the city in Charlotte and say, we don't support Dream Key Partners and the work that they do because their work is integral to our growing city. And the same can be said about Roof Above. Tremendous work, and we support them, and we will continue to support them. On this particular issue, these are both financial partners that went through a process that was established. And the outcome of that process is what we saw come out of the committee. Now, I totally, I totally within, you're right, Mr. Peacock, to add them here because we were adding people. But I believe that we have addressed both Roof Above and Dream Key. And I would not support these additional funds for these two entities. Having said that, I in no way, shape, or form want to color my comments as not supporting these two entities because I fully support them and the work they do. And I think we show up with our purses and manifest that through support throughout the year. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. And actually, mine is totally unrelated, although I guess I'll go ahead and add an addendum and say, I need an addendum, just for a moment, just for a second, to say I echo the sentiments of the Mayor Protim in that, you know, again, one-time ARPA-related is one total thing. We have actually had a full scope conversation around Roof Above, Dream Key Partners. They do great work. But it's just not a one-time implementation. And so, for that, I'll rest that there. But also, Madam Mayor, just for a point of clarifications, we have a member that was actually present in our meeting, and she has now left. And so, for voting purposes, I would like to make sure that we clarify with our attorney clearly what that means as we go through this exercise so that there's no... I mean, I know, but we've had some issues, so I just, again...
She supported me before she left.
Uh. Peacock, I already counted them all.
Okay, okay. We have got to finish this tonight. You guys, we can't do contracts unless we get this thing done tonight, okay?
So I just want to make sure that we add that in so that, you know, for reporting purposes or anyone who is on the outside looking in where we are and what that means. So, Mr. Attorney, will you humor me, please?
Just quickly, as I've stated before, 1675 of the North Carolina Journal statutes, it's pretty clear when a member of the Board who is present and leaves without being excused, that member's vote is counted in the affirmative, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Ashmira.
Do you need four more people to leave?
I think you guys are working just fine for me. This is going to work. This is getting good.
Okay, I'm going to take my bio break in five minutes. Okay, so just real quick, while we are at this, I just want to reaffirm our commitment to Roof Above and Dream Key Partners because we have members from organizations in the room. In the first line item that was approved, 1.2 million dollar additional funding, Roof Above was allocated 100,000, and Dream Key Partners was allocated 231,000. So the committee made a decision because we have limited funding, but we wanted to show our commitment to these organizations that do great work. So I will be continuing to support what was approved by the committee. However, they can certainly bring in additional requests for housing, whether it be different housing programs that we have, whether it's New Development, NOAA, and so on. So there is obviously an opportunity for both of these organizations to apply for additional housing dollars that is specific to a project, which I would be willing to review and support if it meets our criteria. But at this point, for the operation dollars, I think we have already made our commitment and shown that in our first line item. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Johnson.
Okay, Councilmember Peacock, I just want you to know that I will be supporting these organizations with you, okay? So remember that, okay? Now, and that's because I, you know, I work in the field. I have a peer support organization. We rely on Roof Above, and we rely on Dream Key and organizations like that. We know we have, I don't know, if it's 16,000 or 40,000 or whatever that deficit is for affordable housing. People are hurting, and organizations like these really step up when needed. So I will be supporting these organizations. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for taking the time to go through all of this information so that we can make a result or have our votes now. So this is the way that, I hope that Marie will help us and Hannah will help us. I've got them numbered by the way that we went through this board. And so, I'm just going to say, I'm going to ask for a motion.
Mayor Protim, it's a motion. May I ask a clarifying question of the manager?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Manager Jones, so I didn't put it up here, and it looks like we're at 4,63,000. But here's the question I have. We started, myself, you, myself, staff members, different members, have had conversations with Mr. William McNeely regarding Do Greater. There was a presentation to council last year, November, December, sometime, but it did not have a dollar amount. City staff throughout '24 and parts of '25 repeatedly have, during presentations in community and different events, community and different events, highlighted the work that Do Greater has done. The conversations were them expanding into Uptown and taking the training and the programming that they started over on the West Side in partnership with Shiloh Institutional Baptist Church and expanding that. They got their corporate dollars and other funding. And there was a understanding of support from the city, and then conversations stopped. We've all received quite a few emails. I have responded to some of them, because I was also under the impression that this is an economic development partnership. This wasn't just a financial partner. This was an economic development as well as education partnership, where we were having conversations of working together through the city. Somewhere, that conversation changed. Has this turned into something that needs to be on the financial partner list in order for them to get the funding, in order for them to move forward? Because I believe, in the conversations they were having, some of the corporate funding was also in line with city support based off of communications that were happening in '23, '24.
Thank you, Councilmember Mayfield. So, I believe what occurred over the course of the last year were conversations, just as you said, with $750,000 coming from the city, $750,000 coming from the county, and the rest being raised. I don't know where that is as of this day, but it was very consistent with what we were doing at that time. It hit workforce development, it hit training, and even vacant office space. So, I don't see it as anything that's inconsistent with any of the discussions we've had along those lines. I don't know where the other fundraising has come, would come from. But as I mentioned earlier, there was one of a handful of opportunities that we mentioned last year, and I do believe it should stay in play at some level.
So, just for clarification, because I think for myself, where some of this was lost in translation, is I thought we had already did this last year. So, we've been having this conversation now for eight-plus months. So, now that we're in the budget cycle, we only had, past tense, 5.3, in theory, to work with. If this is correct, well, that doesn't even make sense, saying that the remainder of ARPA is $4,63,000. That still hasn't been updated, based off of everything we talked, which is what I was hoping is that we were doing a running, real-time, as we were talking about these numbers, to see exactly what it is that we're looking at having available, once we take out that $1,237, because we've already allocated that, to know exactly where we are. I don't, I didn't interpret the conversation with Do Greater and support of Do Greater as a one-time ARPA deal. I really thought the conversations were an economic development conversation. But if I'm hearing you correctly, you're saying the conversation is still at play, but they need commitments and need to move forward yesterday. And we, city, have been the holdup with this conversation, because this conversation's been happening for a while. So, are you saying that in order for us to move the conversation forward, I need to do a recommendation now of another ad, which I don't like the idea? Or you're saying we have an opportunity to really move this conversation forward through another funding source?
I would say both. I would like some direction from the council. So, what do I mean by that? There's workforce development funds, right? There's funds in corridors. So, there's a combination of being able to pull some resources together.
And that's what I was thinking.
I just have not gotten the nod from the council that this is something...
So, because council has it, so we got a presentation, but that presentation didn't give, didn't ask us anything from last year.
Correct.
So, for clarification, for those of us that are here, in order to have a real conversation around Do Greater, which does touch economic development, workforce, education, it touches at least four, if not five, of our key areas, we have to then have a real conversation, like within the next few weeks, as I'm having a conversation with the manager. We got to have a conversation within the next few weeks before we go out for July, when we're off for a month.
Absolutely.
So, Mayor, does that mean we have to have a recommendation to get? Because we got to have this conversation yesterday, which was the next three Mondays in order for us to make a clear decision and give staff a chance to come back and say, "Here is where we could support it." I just want to make sure we're on the same page, and for clarity. Councilmember Graham is our economic development chair. Did you hear?
Yeah, I just whispered to the ma, I'm sorry. Send it to committee, and we'll scrub it up and make a recommendation. I think that should be workforce development, small business. It fits a lot of buckets, quarters.
It does.
And so, send it to committee, and we'll scrub it up and have a conversation with you as well as Do Greater. I think there, he was here, I think.
So, possibly, then, if we need a recommendation, so I'm not going to add it to this process, because I want to keep this process as clean as possible.
You'll go to the ED Committee.
But if we can get a recommendation, so that we can have that conversation.
And I think it would be helpful for all of us to have as much wisdom, because that's a long time ago, and there are probably some people that don't really ever, you know, have not experienced...
And because I was with it a little longer, I just want to make sure that we are as transparent and as accountable as we possibly can be. So, thank you, Madam Mayor and Mr. Manager.
Ms. Molina? This is our last question.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Mine is just clarification. So, I, for Charlotte Museum of History, just to be clear, right? Is there a possibility for us to look at another avenue for funding this request outside of ARPA? Just to make sure before we vote, so that my colleagues know where we are.
I'm sorry. Yes, again, going back to the infusion fund, which is over, but there are funds still remaining, where the private sector over fundraised the $18 million, or wherever the number was, $6200, yes. And I'm willing to have that conversation, to see if there's something we could pull out of that residual amount for this purpose.
So, just for my colleagues' purpose, so if we don't, and for the public and for consumption, so that I don't get eat up on Twitter, please. We are looking at the possibility of this funding coming from another avenue that is specific to arts, if we do not allocate ARPA dollars tonight. Is that fair?
Absolutely. If you can give me a little leeway, that a portion of this, and just like we talked about Do Greater, is there an opportunity to cobble together enough to meet this request?
Now, you know, Mr. Jones, the first item on here was saying $350,000. Now, that, I think, is the question, that it may not be $350,000. Is that the question that you're asking?
Well, no, I'm just saying, so for voting purposes, if we vote ARPA, then we don't look at this funding, right? Because then we're allocating it from ARPA. But if there are other funds that are available and specific to this particular type of funding, you know, mechanism, then if we can look at that, I think it would be a better way for us to, you know, and we did, you know, I know that there was a total ask of 750, Ms. White, Prima. We did the best we could. I know you're watching. I know you're watching, Prima. But, you know, the 350, if we can get that from another avenue, right? And there's a possibility, a strong possibility, and that's great. And it won't come from ARPA tonight.
And I also, well, we'll go ahead. So, Ms. Ashmira, is everyone ready to begin to vote? All right. So, the first, the first item is the Charlotte History Museum, for a decision to be made somewhere around $350,000, somehow, after a conversation with the manager, to say that there will be some funding in that area. So, yes.
Can we clarify that it's, saying yes means we're, are we giving him permission to look for that funding?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay.
Yes, we are.
So, not necessarily...
To look for the funding, not to allocate...
Not to allocate the funding, but it will be in the... Wait a minute, I want to make sure.
Yeah, we got to make sure we're specific.
One, I'm sorry, if we can do this. When we are reviewing these items and people vote on them, they are going to go into the manager's final board, final budget, for council to vote on next week. And that's where we'll end. So, I think what I want to make sure is that when we, each person, each council member is voting, that you are recorded for your vote, and as well, we're recording, the team is going to record you for the total vote by everyone.
So, just to make sure we're clear, if we say yes, we're authorizing him to look into the other funding mechanism as well? This is just giving him permission to say yes, or is this saying yes to ARPA funding? I need to make sure that we're clear. What do you need from me, Mr. Manager?
I think you made it very clear just now, whether or not this is from this bucket or from some other place.
Can I make a motion, then?
We're going to make motions on every one of these, and I think there are about 30 of them, so.
Okay.
We'll have a lot of time for motions, so. All right. So, we have a motion on, I need a motion on the floor for the Charlotte Museum of History, $350,000, to be reviewed by the city manager and reported back to, but in this year's budget, but report it back as we go into the next budget session. I mean, not the next budget section, as soon as we're back from our break, and then he would have the opportunity to have this already settled in?
Madam Mayor, will you accept a friendly amendment?
Mm-hmm.
So, I would amend that to say, to authorize the manager to seek the funding through the arts funding that he described in this conversation for budgetary purposes. You know, for that amount, to have our colleagues authorize him to see, seek that funding.
Right. You don't have to come back to council again, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We have a motion, Ms. Mayfield.
Thank you. I'm waiting for staff to update the language, so that we're very clear, because right now, I'm not voting to allocate 350. What we are voting on is for the manager to seek other funding sources. That's, that's what we vote on.
I think we're getting staff support over there.
So, manager, do you review funding sources? So, alternative funding sources? Am I correct? Okay. So, Mr. Jones, if you do not find alternative source, what happens?
It doesn't get funded.
Okay, got it. All right.
Other than ARPA.
Okay.
Other than ARPA dollars.
But we do have some more money, somewhere.
Seek funding source?
No, we don't.
Okay.
So, we...
Other than ARPA, I just want to make sure. Okay, that's good.
All right. Okay, so this is our first one. We're moving along.
Okay.
So, we have a motion.
Is there a second to the...
We have, we need a motion.
Second.
And we, who made the motion?
Molina.
And Johnson seconded it.
Followed by Mayor Pro Tem for the second.
Okay.
All right. All in favor, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed?
Okay.
Mr. Graham, thank you very much.
And Brown.
And Ms. Brown, thank you. All right. The next item is the allocating fund for the three-year period to support city staff. It's one time. Do we have a motion?
Oh, yeah.
Yes. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Did I need to state the motion, or are we just capturing that as the motion?
We're waiting for them to type it in, so that we can make sure everybody sees the same thing.
And so, that's where it is.
So, I need to state a motion, or are we just capturing the motion?
I think it's allocate funding over three-year periods to support city staff supportive services, one time, $1,000, $1,500,000.
I have a question.
So, move.
All right, there's a question here.
So...
Do we have the motion?
She made a motion, and she, Brown, there was, Brown seconded it.
A motion, and Ms. Brown seconded the motion.
Yes. So, so for this, this is ARPA source, correct? And supportive services, could you elaborate on that? Does this include healthcare insurance premium that the firefighters and that had a question?
We've discussed, we've discussed everything. It's time to vote.
Actually, what the manager explained legally. So, the answer to my recommendation, to my motion, actually, what the manager clarified is by law, it cannot necessarily be used, it can't, I can't separate it for first responders for insurance purposes. This is going back to the original request, based off of what we learned three Mondays ago, that through Sheila Simpson's Office of HR, we started a pilot program where we had employees that needed assistance, whether it was for groceries, bills, whatever. This is a request of 1.5 million to last over a three-year period, to help if we have employees of the city of Charlotte that run into financial challenges, that have, and they already have a application and identification process. And Ms. Sheila is here, if we want to have her share a little bit more, if she can, about the program.
No.
But it's a program specifically to help our city of Charlotte employees that are facing financial challenges. But not for the insurance piece, because there's legal ramifications through the North Carolina General Assembly and Insurance Commission, that we can't do that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five. Okay?
Madam Mayor, just a point of clarification. We have to make sure that we include Watlington as in the count as a yes.
As a yes.
For all of these.
Her vote would count in the affirmative.
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make sure.
So, Watlington.
Excuse me.
I really just, you know, I really need to be able to hear.
Yeah.
We're having a discussion with the attorney over the absence of Ms. Watlington.
On the motion that was made by Ms. Mayfield, seconded by Ms. Brown, the vote was recorded as five in favor. Ms. Walton has left the meeting and was not excused. Her vote would count in the affirmative.
And so, that would be six.
Six folks.
Six votes. Okay.
All right, I am going to get to the now. Let me check this one off. All right. Who, all of those who oppose? Anyone opposing? One, two, three people in opposition.
Four.
Four. One, two, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Graham, I could not see you. Okay.
And five. Five.
Oh, you're opposed.
All right. So, then we have, so the next item is...
I'm sorry.
Five and five, and she counted it. And Watlington counted it.
Oh, that's right.
Six to five.
Oh, got it. Okay, yeah.
And for the staff, when you record the vote, the vote, I mean, the actual vote should include affirmative vote added for all matters for Ms. Walton's absence.
Oh, okay. Okay. So, the next item is the, how much would a request for proposals in the $1 million to ensure small business utilization targets are met on B of A Stadium? Okay, do we have a motion?
So, move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second? All right.
I thought this was referred to the committee. What? Okay.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem.
I just have a question for the city manager. City manager, you mentioned that line item 33 would be one that would make your budget unbalanced? Or any of these other line items, would any of these other line items make your budget unbalanced?
So, 34 would make it unbalanced.
$25.
But outside of that...
You're good. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So, we're still back on the 32. All right. Do I, do I have a motion and a second? All in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, and three.
Four with Watlington.
Oh, yeah, three.
Four with Watlington.
And Brown. No, not me. One, two, three, and Watlington makes four.
Okay.
So, that fails.
No, you got to the no's.
All right, the no's. All opposed. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All right, thank you, everyone. Okay. Let's go to the next one. I believe that is, that was deleted.
But can I ask a question about that? I'm sorry. Yeah. So, how was that deleted? Was Mayfield the only one that recommended that the first time?
Yeah, well, actually, I did, too.
You did?
Yeah.
So, you're okay with deleting it?
No, I didn't say that.
So, how was it?
Why don't we just get to delete it?
Yeah, why is it deleted? Can we put that back on there and we vote?
Well, Ms. Mayfield, I think.
I initially rec, sorry, Madam Mayor. I initially proposed that, I believe there were a couple of other council members whose names were also on it. For my proposal, after speaking with the manager and learning where we have legal challenges and we are not able to legally identify just support for our first responders and have money set aside just for healthcare, I removed mine. So that's how the delete got up there, so we could just remove my name off of it. For those who still want to continue that conversation, I just removed my name off of it.
Okay, if I can finish.
All right, these are all of us.
If, if, yeah, if we could just leave that on there and then if we, if we move it forward and then we, we have a week to, to figure out if there's something else that can be added or something else we can do. Or we can vote on it today, but I didn't want it removed either. Thank you.
Okay. I'm not quite sure what's, what the, what is the motion?
Mr. Jones says his answer, hand up.
We would have to vote on this because you have three other council members who. If you guys would slide back to the first column, yes.
Oh, yeah.
So Mayfield removed her name from it, that's what she was saying.
Okay.
So, Mr. Jones.
So let's just go through and vote like everything else.
Yeah, Mr. Jones hands it up.
So I'd like to make sure we understand, because we're going to put the budget document together. The option I believe that's before you is $250 for every person that's in the public safety pay plan that has insurance.
It was and it's been updated based on further discussions with legal around, with HR and legal. It's for everybody in the public safety pay plan. Because we can't, again, we can't carve out.
Whether you have insurance or not, if you're in the public safety pay plan, you're going to get 250 bucks. That's what this you're voting on.
And that wasn't addressing my original.
Yes.
Right.
Intent.
Yes, so if I recall this from budget adjustment meeting, we did not discuss 250 for public safety pay plan. So motion that I remember supporting is when we had a couple of firefighters speak at public hearing, they expressed concerns around rising cost of healthcare benefit, which was significant, well, the cost for this year is significantly higher than previous year. So they requested one-time ARPA dollars to assist with this healthcare cost, rising healthcare cost. I don't know how this $250 came about.
If I may, I can help with that.
Yes, thank you.
So yes, we definitely heard the intent, but then looking with legal and HR, we discovered that the, we're healthcare, self-insured, you can't carve out different subsets of your population. So we proposed something that maybe could get towards what your intent was to, because we could give a lump sum bonus to those people, we can't directly offset healthcare costs.
I know a couple of, well, back when I had first started, in 2018, we approved sliding scale healthcare premium benefit. So your insure, healthcare insurance cost is above certain percentage, you'll pay that sliding scale premium with, with this.
No, ma'am, this does not impact the offerings in the healthcare.
Okay. All right, that's all I have, thank you.
I'm not quite sure. All right, let's go ahead. On the item for review healthcare benefit costs for police and fire grant options, all in favor? Is, I need a motion, okay.
No, you have the motion.
I thought we had a motion.
No, we didn't.
Okay, is there a motion for this item?
Move to deny.
Move to deny? Who said that?
Me.
Oh, thank you, okay.
Second.
All right, and a second from Mr. Driggs, because it doesn't help. All in favor of the motion to deny, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six. That's six, okay, thank you. All right. So the next item is, oh, who's, who did not, who was not supportive? I mean, who?
Who wanted to support it, raise your hand.
So one, two, three, four.
Five.
Five, okay, all right. So let's go to now our.
It was five of us. It was five of us, you want to do it again? Because it was six of y'all.
It was five, five and one.
It was five of us and six of y'all.
It was six.
Walton's vote counts in the affirmative now.
Oh.
The affirmative.
So she's considered yes.
Got you.
She's considered yes to the motion to deny.
To my motion.
The denial.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Right, that's, it was a denial and then, okay.
She's considered yes to that motion.
Okay, so. The next, I know you were jumping in there pretty quickly. So our next one is the, I believe this is the one that was an ongoing issue.
I'm sorry, ma'am, just so, so how, Marie, how are you going to register that?
No.
But, so there are five, five.
Okay, I, I'm with you on that, but we're, all right, so I think we got that one. All right, so the next one is, I think the question was, okay. Understand cost to increase minimum wage to $25 an hour, ongoing, and so, do we have a motion on that?
To move it to $25, so move.
Move to approve.
Move to approve, we have a second, who made the second?
Well, Councilmember Brown pulled motion that I'm seconding.
Okay, all right. Any other comments about it? Okay, all in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, makes Watlington. All opposed?
Don't want to pay you.
One, two, three, four, five, six, I have six.
Well, you got six with Walton, right?
I did, I already counted her in the positive. Yeah, we already counted her, okay. No, we, can we just clarify something?
Yeah, they got it.
Did you, did you say?
It's crazy.
Mr. Jones, did you say that paying $25 an hour, the, the budget would not balance with that? Okay.
All right, we're going to be structured.
Thank you. That, that, let's clarify that, that's why the no is for me, yeah.
Okay, the next item is Helping Hands.
But you'll make an exception to that.
Helping Hands, do I have a motion in favor of Helping Hands?
So move.
All right, we have, please raise your hand so I can see. One, two, three, four, five, with Ms. Watlington.
Would be, Walton would be six, right?
No, no, that's, no, one, two, three, four, five.
And Watlington is six.
And Watlington is six, okay, there we go. All right, so that passes. Um, NAACP, oh, all right, oh, those that are opposed.
Everybody else.
All right.
Everybody do the math.
We have one, two, three, you got those guys?
Oh, they've got to see their hands, this is.
Yeah, everybody got that? Malina and everyone else, okay, thank you. So the la, the next one is the NAACP funding?
So move.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion on this hearing, no discussion, all in favor? Oh my gosh, this might be the, I'm shocked. This is like, oh my god.
It's that equity, right?
Keep going, keep going, okay. The next ones are items 38 and 39. Do you mind if I put them all together? Mr. Peacock? I'm sorry.
Yeah, you put them both together.
Yeah, put, we're talking about 37 and 38. And those with Dream Key and Roof Above to go back and increase their funding, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have one?
Second.
All right, and a second from Mr. Peacock? All in favor, please raise your hands. One, two.
Two hands, Edwin.
Two hands.
Man of the people.
He's got Victoria, so that's three, four. All right, so all of you oppose? Okay, one, two, three, four, five, I thought, but that, that's, that's the end.
Can we see who supported it again?
All right, the support folks for it?
Who's about?
Ms. Johnson, Mr. Peacock?
Yes.
And this, and Mayor Protem?
No, not me.
No, not you, who was it?
Watlington.
Watlington, sorry.
Still only four, I just had my hand up.
Yeah, four, okay.
Oh, yeah.
I think that is the conclusion.
How about the Dream Key?
It was a joint vote.
That was the problem, you put the two together, so it's just like a separate vote.
Okay, they were included in that one motion, so. And Madam Mayor, wait a minute, before we go any further, I mean, we need to take this very seriously because this is going to be what the staff will be working on, the manager will be working on to complete this for the budget.
And, don't hate me, everybody, can we just keep scrolling? Because you have more items on here, and I want to make sure that someone doesn't say that we've missed an item.
All right, just any one?
So the additional items reviewed in the information packet, I just want to make sure that, are there any votes? Because a lot of it says review, but clearly the first one is funding supportive of the people's budget. The review of resources for 911, I just want to make sure we're not missing something.
So, if you, Ms., if you are wanting to have something as a part of a discussion, let's go around and make sure, I'll start with Ms. Luana Mayfield, let's go for it, which, do you, will, you tell which one?
The, mine was that staff was supposed to bring back, excuse me, the co, the conversation regarding the pay grades for our liaison staff. And it still goes back to the conversation, but at the end of the day, we just voted whether or not we're going to give employees a raise, and we said that below the budget.
Okay.
I have challenges with that because, for clarification, if we were to move with the proposal, two to three percent, that includes our highest paid and our lowest paid, would be in that category.
You mean the proposed budget?
Right.
So for the operating folks, it was four percent.
And but for our salaried employees, it was like.
But that's just, that's just what we put into every department's budget, which is an average of three percent.
Up to three percent, okay.
An average.
Because I still would love, of which I answered at the very beginning, if not now, will you look into over the next few months to see?
Sure.
Parity wise, what we can do to make sure that our employees don't need to go to HR for assistance.
All right, I don't believe that that requires a motion or, or any action by the council. All right, Ms. Brown?
Yes, I was just saying that we've already went through the people's budget, and I made it clear for the record that I was supporting, but we went through pages three through eight and we realized that some of the partners that we were supporting did not apply, so it made it difficult for us to try to push it through, so I give it back to you, Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Brown. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I wanted to ask about Councilmember Mayfield's recommendation, the constituent services pay grade. Last year, did we approve each, was there a change to the OCS structure in last year's budget? No?
We had another person.
We had another person, did we ever hire that other person?
Yes.
Okay, not, it wasn't Alexis, was it?
Yes.
It was, that's who that person was?
Yeah, she's had a couple of assignments.
Well, I know Alexis is here, but I thought there was somebody else besides Alexis or another structure, okay. And then also, just to clarify, that we did support giving city staff a raise to $24 an hour instead of 25, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the minimum, okay, so it's not that those of us who didn't support the $25 didn't support a raise, we support a raise, we just didn't support an imbalanced budget.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Malina?
Well, I was, I didn't know, are we, if we're going in order, but absolutely, we can talk about 911, we have to do something. We've been talking about this for five years. I can remember being in your office pre-COVID, Mr. Jones, and having a video of, of a 911 call on hold. I just think that that's unacceptable. So I, and I know that there's a plan and we're hiring in August, but I think that that's dangerous. Councilmember Mitchell and I talked about it, right? He was on hold for 17 minutes. So we have to do something immediately, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Malina?
What would that be?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you.
So, so, so do you have any suggestions or what can we do?
So the plan, Councilmember Johnson, is I think there are like 23 vacancies, there is a couple of tranches of staff that are coming in, and I think by August, Marie, help me out, we'll be as close to full as there.
Yes, sir, according to police and their division, they feel like those will be filled by August and then they'll have some more in the hopper for attrition as well.
But this has been an ongoing problem? So if we're hiring, is this something we're doing differently this year? Or do we always have vacancies? Or do we need to look at the hiring practice or the structure or departments or, or something?
I think it's two pieces, Councilmember Johnson. One, when this came to our attention maybe three years ago, we did a lot of different things around compensation, okay? So not to say that we're perfect with it, but clearly it has helped because by August we feel that we will be fully staffed. And I'll tell you, and I will continue to report back to this body about the progress we're making in terms of filling those positions.
Thank you, because the report we got, I think we met the goal 70% of the time. I asked for the KPIs and it was, I think, 70% that we were meeting the goals. I imagine our, our, our goals or aspiration is to meet it more than 70%?
Yes, ma'am, it's 90, and we're, and we're trending in the right direction, but you're right, we're still in the 70s.
Okay, so, yeah, if we could get an update monthly, and I don't know if we can roll some of those calls to 311. I know 911 operators do have specialized training, but I don't, and I, and I think when there's an overflow and if there's more than three minutes hold, then it rolls over to 311?
It would run, roll over.
Over to medic or the other, yeah. So I think three minutes is a long time, so if we could look at a shorter period of time for rollover, I mean, I don't want to get too far in the weeds and the operations, but from a public safety perspective, I don't think anyone should call 911 and be on hold. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on, thank you, Ms. Johnson. I will say that, you know, they, they track that on national metrics as well, so how other metropolitan areas are doing. Okay, I have Ms. Malina's hand.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So what I brought up was, it was with reference to an anonymous email that we received, and I think it was widely distributed with regards to the pay of our salaried employees and, and making sure that we were competitive with our salaried employees as, you know, in the same way that we are with our hourly employees. And, and it was really just to review, and, and this isn't like an ARPA funding request, it really was, I don't, and I don't know if we can make that adjustment in this particular ask, and, and like Councilmember Johnson, I think I want to be clear in saying, as much as I would love to say we should all have our, you know, we should all have our, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. We should all have our, our, our staff members making at least $25 an hour, I think we would all say that, but again, there is a raise, there is $24 an hour, and not to say that that's good enough, but, you know, I know that 25 was on the board and we definitely got to clarify that that didn't mean that we weren't saying that the $24 was merited, it's just that the 25 would mess up the budget. Clarify that, but then to also say that, like I said, to make sure that we are being just as competitive with our salaried employees, to maintain, you know, the pipeline of leadership that we have and the talent that we have, I think that's important to make sure that we're competitive, right? And, and that we're.
I, I think it's important, I know we don't want to drag it up, but I think it's important to look at our employees almost as three different units. One is public safety that never, ever stopped working during COVID, right? I mean, they had to come to the office every day. Same with hourly, hourly, you know, whether it's solid waste services, you know, more. And then salary had so much more flexibility, hybrid work schedules. And so as a, an organization, we understood the differences, and there were some trade-offs. And so while the 3% is just an average, it's really zero to six. So there are some salaried employees that can make 6%. So I just want to make sure when we talk about this, whether we're, if we, if we zero it in on public safety, you're going to have one story, if you zero it in on hourly, so, but together, we think that we put together a package over the years for salary, that that flexibility is what they wanted almost as much as anything else.
No, that, that's really good, Mr. Manager. Thank you for clarifying that, because I don't, you know, that wasn't articulated, so that's, that's good to know. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. So we've discussed line item 48 with Ms. Brown, 49 with Ms. Johnson, and we just, we discussed 51 with Mayfield, 52 with Melina. Mr. Mitchell, we jumped over yours at 50. Did you want to make comments?
Yes, Mayor Protem, thank you. And this coincided presentation, we, we received a date in jobs and economic development committee, where we talked about corridors opportunities and focus on our small businesses. And so the institute just landed a new, a new office here that Councilmember Mayfield and Mayor Protem and I attended. So I think this would be a great opportunity to reach out to them, to partner and leverage their funding, because we still here in our small, in our corridors, small business need capital. So I still like for us to talk about how can we leverage the institute funding and capital for our small business as well as inexpensive, inexpensive space when it comes to some of our small business in the corridors, because they are looking for space. So, City Manager, you could bring something back on those two fronts.
I, I think that's great, Councilman Mitchell, and we can do it one of two ways, it can be a part of the referral would do greater.
Okay.
Or we could, you know, try to bring some information, but I think the more that we can get some of these asked.
Right.
Into committee.
Right.
So that we can get some guidance, I, I think we won't, we can be faster.
My chair, can, can we tee this up for, I'm sorry, Mayor, can you refer to my chair for August? Let me do it the right way.
Of course.
Okay.
Whatever you want, Mr. Mitchell. Let's just go home.
Oh, I got it, oh, let me put another ask here, that's right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
As long as you have two separate conversations.
Two separate. Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Okay, so we will now go to line item 53, Ms. Ashamira. Did you have any comments or follow-ups on the review paid parental leave?
I, I did get a formal response, Marie and the team, great job putting together this very detailed package that addresses my question. Thank you.
Okay, great. And lastly, oops. And lastly, we have Ms. Johnson with the review of tourism funds. Did you have any additional comments there?
Yeah, I'm, you, you all know how I feel, I'm going to be consistent, and if, if I understood, Mr. Jones was willing to send something to be considered for tourism funds we talked about tonight. What was that? For the, was it the, the museum? Or what was it?
It's a different pod. It is the arts pod.
Okay, it's a small victory, but it, it's, okay. Thank you.
It's not to the tourism, right? Arts.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, for, yeah, for clar, all right, okay, hang on, guys. We're, if we may, hold on, hold on. Marie has a clarifying statement. Hold on.
Thank you. We have to make a motion to direct the manager to make the budget, and I believe it's in the notes.
Mayor.
Thank you. For the manager.
Sorry.
The instruction to.
So much work to do.
Manager.
It's right here.
Mayor Protem has it, Mayor.
Okay, yes, so, yes, is, so is there a motion on directing the city manager to prepare the necessary documents and resolutions for the FY 2026 budget ordinance?
So move.
There is a motion by Mr. Graham and a second by Ms. Mayfield. Okay?
Okay, all in favor?
All in favor.
Aye. Aye.
And everyone is not here is a yes.
Any opposed?
Any opposed. Good to see you, Mr. Smith.
That's unanimous.
James, okay.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Motion.
All in favor of adjourning the meeting? Please go home, raise your hands and then go home. Thank you.